All right, we'll call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order, and we'll begin with the roll call.
Ms. Yoshimura. Ms. Dean. Here. Mr. Parks.
Shh.
Mr. Mokehi.
I'm here.
Mr. Ferguson.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Spring.
Here.
Mr. Strike.
Here.
Okay, so we'll move down to the next is minutes. Have a motion from Commissioner Robinson. Do I have a second? Mr. Ferguson, any comments on the minutes? Any comments? Feedback going once, going twice? I see nothing. It's approved. Minutes are approved from December 7th, October 7th. All right, disclosures, since I don't have a vice, I will go ahead and ask for disclosures. So start with Mr. Spring, since you have a mouthful. I'll start with you, John.
I always have one. No disclosures.
Commissioner Dean?
No.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yes, in the matter of Resolution 2013-046, Case 2013-164, I was not at that meeting, so I'll be abstaining from that vote.
That was D1E?
I'm sorry, yes, D1E.
Thank you. Commissioner Strike?
Yes, as I was just seated in the last seating, I would be recusing myself of D1A, Resolution 2013-038, 039, 042, and 044.
So you're out all but E. All right, Commissioner Ferguson?
None.
Commissioner Dean, you have the...
Yes, thank you, Chair. I missed one item. D1C 2013-042, I did disclose I do business with the architect who was on that particular project. I was directed to participate, and I'll continue to participate on this particular motion.
As I recollect, SWE asked you to participate during the actual hearing, so I think you're fine for the resolution. And then I, as you all know, I have been recused on D1B 2013-039, the master plan, Plan Community. So I think that means we will not have sufficient people to vote, so we will pull that on the consent agenda time. Okay? All right, so moving in, then we are ready to move to the consent agenda. All disclosures along. Motion from Mr. Ferguson?
I make a motion, we accept the consent agenda with the exception of D1A and D1B.
And I have a second, Commissioner Strike. Any other items to be pulled? Mr. Robinson, Strike, Spring.
I'd like to speak...
All right, go ahead, sir.
I pulled D1A. We do not have D1A. I'm extremely disappointed that that's over two months ago now. We don't have the resolution, and it's not on the agenda for next week's meeting, even though I may understand we would get it. But I do think that we should get the resolutions in a more timely manner than two months. We have people go through here that were on it before, and they're not around to talk about the resolution that they voted on. And so I just find it almost inexcusable that we wait two months. It's been on the last two meetings on the agenda, and then it doesn't show. On D1B, I pulled that one because it's my understanding that we don't have enough people to vote.
I believe that's correct. We're not with Ms. Yoshimura, not here, myself recused, and Mr. Strike recused. We will not have sufficient people to vote on the master plan. Back to D1A. Do we have a status on that, an explanation of why we're at, Carol? Do you get Steve Park access plan?
I checked in with the staff, and they said it will be to you all by next, for your Monday meeting next week. They just are still working through pulling the resolution together and all the accompanying documents.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yeah, I mean, I will be more than a little irritated if it shows up on Friday. I mean, we should have it now for next week's meeting, and I think there's other issues going on that need to be addressed and addressed very quickly and timely, and that needs to get to us. If there are questions, I'm certain the commissioners are available to answer what their comments meant or to clarify their comments, if that's what's holding it up.
I will pass that comment on to them.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? So as I read it, we are going to approve the consent agenda, Item C, Resolution 2013-042, Resolution D, or Item D, Resolution 2013-044, and Item E, Resolution 2013-046. Is that correct? Any other comments on those? Seeing, hearing, none. Consent agenda is approved minus those first two. Okay. So now read the public agenda. All right, we're moving into... Yeah, we've got it there. It doesn't need to be there, right? I won't do that yet. Can we have an info? So we can go to F. All right, moving down to regular agenda. First one we have up is Case 2013-150, Time Extension for Natural Resource Extraction. Do we have a staff report on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The petitioner in this case is Mr. David Mallers, and his wife, Mr. Mallers, is here in the audience here to answer any questions that you might have. This is a request for a five-year time extension to a natural resource extraction. It's commonly referred to as the Moose Horn Business Park, and in the original approval five years ago, they foresaw that a time extension may be needed. In the middle of the memo on page one of your packet, you'll see staff has quoted what the resolution says, and it says that a time extension could be approved without the need for a public hearing. There's no record of any violations or environmental problems, none of the reviewing agencies have any, or the public has any complaints, any objections. The petitioner has been submitting progress reports annually. They're in the case file. Therefore, the Planning Division recommends approval of the five-year time extension to December 31st, 2018. Thank you.
All right, any questions for staff? Any questions for staff? All right, then, oh, John, go ahead. Mr. Spring?
It was, I pushed it and it went off. Yes, through the chair, staff, two questions. There's a comment from the Department of Transportation regarding debris and objects tracked into the road. Apparently, they have some concern about that. I didn't see anything in the conditions of approval addressing that. Is there any, do you have any opinion about whether that needs to be added?
No, truck tracking, I'd have to go back and look at the conditions of approval, but that's a standard condition. It's covered by, I can't recall off the top of my head. See, we request the following condition be added to the time extension portion, needs to be kept clean, any debris tracked in the road, operation natural resource extraction can be a hazard to the motorist. Well, if you could circle back to me, I'm going to look at the reso, make sure that that condition is already in there. I think that, I don't think that there has been any history of truck, of mud tracking at this site, and that that's more, speaking to DOT, I was looking for a specific condition to that effect, and I'll look through the resolution and try and find that now. Did you have a second question as well?
Yes, through the chair. I didn't, no, I didn't see any specific condition of form or approval that addressed that, but the second question regards the, whether or not the petitioner has met the standards of approval from the June 2008 Planning and Zoning Commission Resolution, specifically Number 10. Install buffer landscaping within five years or when the Oakland Highway is reconstructed along the Oakland Highway, redundant. Resolve the design with staff to include locations that do not impede driveway access and visibility and pose minimal conflicts with the upgrade of the Oakland Highway. The Oakland Highway was completed in 2012 in that area. So it's been five years since the approval. I'm assuming the intent of this was to have the landscape, buffer landscaping installed before any particular, any future time extension, because it coincides with the time extension need. There was a year last, this summer, 2013, which was after the completion of Oakland Highway. It appears to me that they did not meet Condition Number 10 of the approval.
Through the chair, thank you, Mr. Spring. In regards to your first question, if you look at, I guess the pages aren't numbered, but page three of the resolution, 5C, it states, "On-site personnel shall have total authority to direct road cleanup and maintenance operations as needed. On-site personnel shall have the authority to call a sweeper, water truck, or motor grader as necessary to respond..." Oh, no, no, that's the next one. Circulation, the D, "Circulation roads within the excavation area shall be maintained to minimize materials carried onto the adjacent properties or public rights of way." Clearly, that it's prohibited to truck, for trucks to track mud into the street. I think that Mr. Mallers could respond to questions about how they deal with that, prevent that. I'd also ask you to ask Mr. Mallers the question of whether, whether or not he thinks that the condition is met in regards to the buffer landscaping.
Through the chair. I think it's up to the city to decide whether or not they meet the conditions of approval. I don't, I don't think we leave it up to the petitioner to decide those things.
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, you know, in regards to this condition, I spoke with Mr. Mallers. He said that he had stockpiled the topsoil and that a portion of the buffer landscaping was, was present, and the rest of it was intended to be installed in 2014, and that the road project had been completed in 2013. I didn't, staff didn't go to DOT and verify that.
Through the chair, I did talk to DOT, and that it was completed in 2012.
Any other questions for staff? If not, petitioner or petitioner's representative, sir, you have 10 minutes, and you can reserve time for, well, it's not a public hearing, so you have 10 minutes.
My name is David Mallers. I'm the owner of the Moose Farm Business Park, and I'm here to answer any questions. I would be happy to address Mr. Spring's questions. We initially purchased a broom and a water truck. We sweep the driveway. We, during the rebuilding of the Glen Highway, the approaches were paved. We paved our approach completely across our exit scale to help eliminate this. We have received absolutely no complaints of any debris on the road, fairly competent about keeping the roadway clean. We have done some buffer landscaping. The buffer landscaping program goes completely around the property, and we are many hundreds of feet away from some of the property lines that now still have natural buffering. There were water trucks on the Glen Highway this year. I actually have a letter, I've taken a landscaper out there, I have a letter from him. We have decided that Jamie with Falls Landscaping came out in August, and his recommendation was that we do the buffer landscaping in the spring of '14. So I'm not trying to dodge the buffering, it simply is not complete at this point.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yeah, Commissioner Spring, I read Point 10 on page 11 of the application. Install buffer landscaping with five years or when the Glen Highway is reconstructed along Old Glen Highway. So I read that as install buffer landscaping along the Old Glen Highway. And so my question to you, sir, is what is your plan to complete the buffer landscaping along Old Glen Highway?
My plan is, as discussed with the Falls Landscaping, that there is a standard that the muni accepts, and he is, I am prepared to do it to municipal standards, whatever those standards are.
I understand that, Mike. My question was timing, sir. What's your schedule to do that?
Spring of 2014.
Okay, so it would be completed next year?
It would be completed next year.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for petitioner? Any else? All right, thank you very much, sir. All right, so what is the wish of the bike? I have a motion by Commissioner Ferguson, seconded by Commissioner Dean. Commissioner Ferguson, would you like to speak your motion?
I would like to make the motion first. In the matter of Case 2013-115, a five-year time extension for natural resource extraction, I make a motion that we approve the request with the one change that landscaping along the Oakland Highway be completed prior to November 1 of 2014.
And seconded by Commissioner Dean, and she's giving me, now would you like to speak your motion, sir?
Yeah, I think that the, there's no comments, there's no complaints. The operation appears to be functioning to the satisfaction of the local community. We need it. It meets the intent of the codes, and we should approve it.
Any other comments? Mr. Spring? I'd just like to comment that, yeah, that's, that's my area, and I think we get, they're good neighbors. I have not been made aware of any complaints at all in that, in that area. Commissioner Spring, did you want to add something?
I, yes, through the chair, I'll, I'll be supporting the motion. I am, I guess I'm concerned that there may not be adequate enforcement of some of these conditions of approval that the Planning and Zoning Commission makes. Adding it, extending it to 2000, November 1, 2014 would help clarify the existing condition, because obviously the existing condition, I think, has been violated, so we need to have a new one. But I'm not sure, please convince me, I'd like somebody to convince me that it's going to be reviewed by somebody from zoning enforcement to make sure it happens, because I don't believe this one was done properly, this condition was reviewed properly.
I ride my bike there regularly. I'll keep an eye on it for you, John. All right, so we have a motion, a second. Any, any further comments? Do I need to machine? I think, I think we're all okay. Do I have any comments? Pass unanimously? Pass unanimously. All right, that one's passed as unanimously. Okay, moving on to 4B. We need a post, motion to postpone 4B, Clutna?
Oops. On Case 213-153, amend additional use for natural resource extraction, Clutna, Inc. I move that we postpone that to December 16, 2013.
As soon as we have, can someone give me a hand on a second, since we don't machine up yet? I have a hand from Commissioner Robinson, a second. Any discussion? Postponed to 2016? Seeing, hearing, none. That one passes, postponed to 2016? 12, 12, 16, December 16, that's next week? All right, moving on to Case F5, is that correct? Case 2013-152, Municipality of Anchorage Draft Design Study Report for Public Road. Staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The project here tonight is the pre-final DSR for Phase 1 of West Park Drive to Sandlake Road. Phase 1 improvements, it will extend from Sandlake intersection to approximately the West Park Drive intersection. Even though the final Phase 2 of the project extends the project out to Jodhpur Street, the pedestrian facilities will only extend west of West Park Drive intersection. The project objectives are shown on page 2. The preferred road section will consist of two 11-foot travel lanes, 5-foot bike lanes, a 7-foot separation for snow storage and pedestrian bike buffer, 10-foot or an 8-foot multi-use pathway, and street lighting will be using LED technology. In terms of the lighting, the light poles will have a mounting height of 35 feet with a spacing of approximately 195 feet. There are multi-use pathways on both the north and south side. The north side will have the 10-foot wide pathway, while the south side will have an 8-foot wide pathway. Their design alternatives looked at whether doing a curbed section or an uncurbed section. Their preferred alternative is the curbed section. They also looked at various intersection alternatives. In this case, they decided that both intersections would have a roundabout design. That's all I have. Oh, I do want to indicate that the petitioner's representatives from R&amp;M are here tonight, along with John Smith from PM&E.
Do we have questions for staff? Commissioner Dean?
Through the chair. I have a question as to why this is not a public hearing. This is a fairly intensive area there. There is a lot of controversy about whether to extend it all the way through, and it was phased rather than one long project. I know the funding was difficult to get. Also, AW&amp;W has not been involved in this project, and this would have been an excellent place for them to extend water and sewer lines. I'm just curious why it isn't a public hearing? If we did choose to make it into a public hearing, what it would do to the progress on this project?
Through the chair, Ms. Dean. It's not a public hearing, because it's long been the department's policy that with public facilities, they're not public hearings.
And if we made it a public hearing, and we decided to go in that direction, what would it do to the progress of this project?
That question, Ms. Dean, would be best addressed by the project petitioners, rather than having staff answer that.
Commissioner Spring?
Yes, through the chair, just like you to remind us exactly what our authority is on public facility site plan reviews and what we're doing here, and where our recommendation goes and how it's treated.
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, if the commission would like to make this case a public hearing, we could do that, would be postponed tonight, and we would hold it, you know, next month at next month's meeting, because we need a period of 21 days to advertise it.
Through the chair, my question really is, are we making a recommendation to staff, basically, on this project? And that's as far as it goes? We don't have any real yes or no authority, right? We just make a recommendation?
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, the commission does have the authority to, in terms of reviewing what's before you, the pre-final DSR.
Yes, but it's just the recommendation.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yeah, two, two questions, and I'm having trouble finding one of them right now. The first question is, why is this in two phases and not one? There's, there seems to be a very valid position that it may be more efficient to put this in two phases, or put this in one phase instead of two phases, and I just want to know the thought process that went into two phases.
To answer your question, I only know as much as what was written in the DSR, so that question is more involved and would be best answered by the petitioner's representative.
Okay, and I lost a tab in my book, apparently. It seems to me that staff had made a recommendation that we use LED lighting on this project. Can you help me find where that recommendation is? I don't believe it was in the design team. I think it was a staff recommendation, but yet I don't see it. So I don't know whether I misread something, which does happen, or, or what.
Sorry, is that a question for staff?
I'm trying to. Okay, page 2 of the bottom of the staff report, the, no, okay, down there at the bottom is this, "Street lighting using LED technology." Are you just repeating what the designer gave you, or is that a, a recommendation by planning and zoning, long-range planning?
Through the chair, Mr. Ferguson, that is a, that's been a decision by the designers of the project, not staff.
Okay, thank you. I will repose the question to the designers. Thank you.
Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you, through the chair. Question for planning staff. I think one of the questions that seems to be coming up to me is, as you go from Phase 1 to Phase 2, really, the land use is transitioning from an evolving suburban area to more of a suburban rural area. It clearly has, you move into R6 zoning, the more larger lots. Is planning, does planning get involved with this, this study team at all in terms of trying to characterize the, the land use, or is that simply left up to adopted land use plan maps and those sorts of things?
Through the chair, Mr. Robinson, it's your second choice there. We aren't typically involved in the scoping of the project or, or determining what the land use around it or how, how we name it. We do look at any area plans that have been done and how it's been characterized when that plan was done. In this case, it was the West Anchorage District Plan.
And are there any sort of planning best practices that come from the department at all that recognize a city, a roadway as it transitions from, from one land use to another? I mean, to me, the crux of the issue is we've got a design that's more suburban in nature in a community on, on sort of the other side of the road that's wanting it to maintain rural characteristics. And it strikes me that, you know, all, all we're doing one of two things tonight is we're just building one road, stopping there in order to continue the same pattern, or we're just going to have a stark transition point at that point in the future, and I think that's the struggle. But is there, is there any kind of planning recommendation that we are establishing the context through which these things have to comply, and therefore there's some guidance to the road designers there?
Mr. Spring, nothing more than what you, we would find in the West Anchorage District Plan, but the other determinant in that is the, the life of the project. It's projected, you know, to serve Anchorage's transportation needs in that area of town from the year, you know, out to the year 2025 to 2035. So I think when they design the road, that's what they're looking at, is long-term needs in terms of the LOS.
Thank you.
Commissioner Spring?
Yes, through the chair. I appreciate Commissioner Robinson bringing that issue up. I was going to bring it up for the petitioner's representative, but it is, I think, something I like to see happening with these street design projects, is to have the planning department review, or at least be part of the team, the design team, so that it is truly some type of context-sensitive design process. Because in the long-range transportation plan, and in the draft official streets and highway plan, there is something called a street typology, which is supposed to be taken into account in the design of streets, and that takes into account the land use, the adjacent land use. That is something that the planning department should have some input on. And the design based on the street typology, if it's a low residential, a low-density residential, is different from the suburban residential in terms of the type of facility is constructed, sidewalks, multi-use trails, those type of things, which are critical components of any street project. So I believe, I'd like to reiterate, reiterate that comment and maybe make a suggestion later regarding trying to incorporate the planning department a little bit more earlier into the process.
Any other questions for staff? If not, we have the, I believe it's the petitioner's representative. Ma'am, you have 10 minutes, and you can reserve some time for rebuttal. We should reserve time?
Hi, my name is Juan Lee. I'm with R&amp;M.
I'm with R&amp;M Consultants, and I'm here representing the municipality of Anchorage on the West Diamond Boulevard Upgrade Project Phase One. With me, I have our project team, John Smith from PM&E, he's the project manager for the project, as well as I have Mark Frutiger, who's the project engineer on the project from R&amp;M, and Tim Gray, the project manager for R&amp;M on the project. Through the chair, thank you for having us. This project actually started in '05, '06 with the citizens and the residents of the West Anchorage area identifying the problems that they wanted the roadway to solve as it was upgraded. While it was community-led as a priority, it was funded and subsequently phased during this restart of the project in 2013 with a state grant. And the phasing comes from the funding and also from the public involvement that we started up again this year. There was little agreement on the context of the roadway. And so with the two different contexts that we heard about from residents and then users of the area, it was determined, and we had concurrence from the administration, to phase the project. And the natural phasing was from West Park Drive to Sand Lake Park, which is the first phase that's before you today. That area is zoned R1A to the north and R1A to the south. West Park subdivision is to the north. That is predominantly single-family housing with three to six dwelling units per acre. And according to Title 21, the R1A zoning is an urban type of zoning. And therefore, the proposed improvements that we have for Phase One for West Diamond is a more typical urban section with curb and gutter, pedestrian and multi-use, non-motorized multi-use facilities on both sides of the roadway. What we're also doing at this project development phase for West Diamond Boulevard is to implement the adopted plans and policies that this board has worked through as, with the community in adopting. For example, the West Anchorage District Plan, which was just adopted last year in 2012. We have the pedestrian plan, which was adopted in 2007, the bike plan, which was adopted in 2010. And so what we're trying to do here is make sure that all the adopted plans and policies, Title 21, and then the Design Criteria Manual, which sets out the dimensional standards for the roadway design, the urban collector, suburban, or rural, is followed. And so what we have for you today is, to the best of our knowledge of the plans and adopted policies and design criteria, we are following that at this project development level for this public facility for Phase One. Thank you.
All right, questions for the petitioner? Commissioner Ferguson? Commissioner Robinson?
Would it be a safe comment to make? By doing this in two phases, you're increasing the cost and taking longer time. Is that a correct statement?
It is a correct statement that as you have bigger projects and you have to phase them for certain efficiencies, you do lose other efficiencies, such as the additional costs with the transition areas that typically have to be rebuilt as funding for the second phase begins. But it is not atypical for a long corridor such as West Diamond, especially with the different contexts that need to be worked out to be phased. Unfortunately, the unintended consequence is the increased cost.
How long is this corridor?
It is over, it's the first phase, Phase One, that's before you, is approximately a third of a mile. The rest of the project from West Park Drive intersection to Jodhpur Street, the terminus is near the park entrance on Jodhpur Street, and that is approximately a mile.
So it's not really a big project?
It's a, it's a fairly long project for the context of the area. It's an area-wide serving collector as well. And as we mentioned earlier, there, it has two different contexts, and therefore, the phasing makes sense for the funding, which we have for the first phase only, and then to work out with the rest of the community the context and what improvements are needed for Phase Two.
What is the schedule for Phase Two?
Phase Two has not had full funding for other design or construction yet. We are told that the legislators are very interested in phasing, excuse me, funding Phase Two, and hopefully, in 2014, there will be some funding set aside for at least the first phase, is our hope.
So we have no schedule for Phase Two?
Correct, because we do not have funding for Phase Two yet.
The, can you speak to why you selected LED lights for this thing?
Yes.
I like the way you did it. Through the chair, my name is Mark Frutiger, spelled F-R-U-T-I-G-E-R, with R&amp;M Consultants. I'm the project engineer on this project. I'd be happy to answer your question regarding the LED lighting. The Design Criteria Manual, as it stands currently, recommends a white light, and it is practiced in the municipality to use a light made in diode design to accomplish that. We did also look at metal halide lighting, as well as high-pressure sodium lighting, and compared the pole spacing, as well as the cost of each of those three systems. And actually, the LED lighting was cheaper and had a larger pole spacing.
I like your pole spacing. I think it's a lot more reasonable than other spacing we've had before us recently, so...
We've heard that.
I like that, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Spring?
Yes, this question on the multi-use trail on the south side, the eight-foot multi-use trail. And in the area, there's a couple of roads that have multi-use trails. There's Sand Lake going north-south that has a 10-foot, I think, on the west side of the street, but none on the east side of the street. West Diamond Boulevard to the east has a multi-use trail, 10-foot on the north side of the street, but nothing on the south side of the street. This particular project has two multi-use trails. The eight-foot is on the south. My concern is that, isn't it a little discontinuous to have one section of West Diamond as a eight-foot multi-use trail? When I, and I'm assuming that due to the rural nature of the road further in Phase Two, that there wouldn't be a need for a multi-use trail, or it wouldn't call for it ordinarily. So is this just the eight-foot multi-use trail that's going to stand alone by itself, or what's going to happen with it?
Through the chair, thank you. So we are trying to, as best as we can, follow the adopted plans and policies in the area. The West Anchorage District Plan actually shows two trails, one on each side of the roadway along West Diamond in this corridor. Also, there is future development on the south side of West Diamond Boulevard, the Diamond Sands subdivision, which is now vacant, but has plans for development in the future for multifamily housing. We're hoping that we can provide a pathway on that side for those users as well. This is also a route that the Anchorage School District has bus stops on for students for both, all three schools, actually, elementary, middle school, and high school. So we feel like it was our responsibility, as the municipality is upgrading roadways, that they are upgraded to current standards, to serve all users, including students waiting at bus stops. And they get, they get dropped off on both sides of the roadway to meet the adopted plans and policies, as well as Title 21 telling us that this is an urban section based on those adjacent zoning and the future built out of the area, that two pathways, one on each side of the roadway, is needed.
Chair, the, I didn't realize the West Anchorage Plan called for something that contradicted the bike plan. Bike plan doesn't show two, it shows a multi-use path on the north side. Also, it doesn't show bike lanes, although I'm not against bike lanes, but the bike plan shows a shared road facility there, primarily because the number of, the traffic is so low that it was felt that it could be safely accommodated there. But I don't understand how one, I guess, one plan, I think, I've heard Commissioner Ferguson mention this before, the contradictions among all these different plans and why one plan would call for something that another plan didn't call for. And so I'm not, still not, so your plan is then, on Phase Two, to extend the eight-foot all the way to Jodhpur?
Through the chair, no. Right now, we do not have any plans for pedestrian facilities past the West Park Roundabout. Our hope is that when we start Phase Two, we can work with the community and see what is needed. There is a mix of zoning. We have R6 on the south side in Phase Two and R1A zoning on the north side. My understanding is that Title 21, it doesn't have direction on what standard you need to build the road to, whether it's the highest standard, which is the urban section, or the lower standard, if there is a mix of zoning. So there's still some work to be done for Phase Two, and therefore, the phasing makes sense in that context as well.
Okay, one other question regarding the roundabout. There's two roundabouts. One is West Park and one is Sand Lake. I guess I understand why Sand Lake would have a roundabout, given the accident history there. It looks like it said there was like 14 accidents during the study period, whenever that was. But there's only was one accident, vehicular accident, I believe, on the West Park. And the ADT is so low there that I'm not sure why there was a, the engineers and consultants decided there was a need for a second roundabout there, when it seems like a stop is working now and will probably work in the future.
Through the chair, the roundabout serves several of the issues that we heard that needed to be solved for the roadway as it was going to be upgraded by the municipality. One is traffic calming. With the straight section of Phase One, the speed studies show that the 85th percentile speed, or what, 85% of the cars traveling in that corridor are going well above the posted speed. And so we've been asked by the community if we can install some sort of traffic calming element. The roundabouts serve that. As well, as we're building these facilities, they are 20- to 30-year investments in the community. They're not cheap, and therefore, we had to look at full build-out and projected ADT in the future. Right now, it may seem low. The counts that we got were 2,400 just in August of 2013 for this first phase. In the future, at full build-out, we're expecting, under current zoning, an additional 700 homes in the area and parks and two schools in the West Park subdivision that have already been, the land's already been acquired by the school district. And I believe the planning department worked on that site selection in 2006, I believe, while that subdivision was being built. So in the future, there is going to be a lot more homes, a lot more cars, a lot more kids in the area. The roundabouts, while they seem like they are not needed today, in the future, they are the best solution based on the traffic analysis to solve the capacity issues. In the future, there will be delays at those two intersections if you have just a stop control or a light to solve the, and the skewing also, especially with Sand Lake. The roundabouts, with the way they're designed and their geometry, will solve the skewing issues that we have today, and as a result, have the accidents that we have during this study period from your, from the traffic analysis report in the DSR.
Through the chair, typically, you don't put a roundabout unless there's a warrant for a traffic light. Is that correct? Is there a warrant, is the intersection warrant a traffic light in the future?
I understand that the intersection did not meet the warrant for a traffic light. Am I right?
So it's basically then just a traffic calming measure that the neighborhood wants, which I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but that's the basis for the roundabout primarily?
Through the chair, that, it solves several issues. With roundabouts, it will meet the level of service when we build it in 2015, for example, and then in the design year, which is 2035. The roundabouts, they, it's going to be a single-lane roundabout that's being proposed. They police themselves in terms of speed. They get people to slow down. You have an element that calms traffic, as well as providing the level of service that's needed in the future. Even today, we're being told that there is queuing at the two intersections, and with 700 more homes in the future and two schools. And the vacant land that's going to be built for parks and open space, for example, when the two pits in the area are going to be completed and their conditional uses are up for the fill, that's going to be open space, open space, parks, schools, those are all destinations. And with destinations, you have more people driving, and therefore, the roundabout was based on this area and the analysis that was done was going to provide the best level of service today and into the future, well beyond the design year.
Just one more question, that's all I will have. There was a, well, I don't know about that, but there's one comment we got from, we're not having a public hearing, but we did get information from someone who was objecting to the transition of West Diamond to the, within Phase Two. And it wasn't a right-of-way take, but I believe there was a construction easement or some impingement upon his private property. It seemed to me that was primarily due to the existence of the roundabout. So my question is, would you need that type of right-of-way, not taking, I'm not sure it's a taking, but expansion, if there wasn't a roundabout in that location?
Mark, do you want to answer that?
Through the chair, if I may answer that question, the transition you're referring to is a approximately 700-foot transition that is west of the West Park Roundabout. The top width of the embankment initially, the way it's laid out in the pre-final design study report, would have accommodated future pathways on both sides. It was independent of the roundabout size. In the meantime, we've held a meeting with the concerned resident, as well as some other folks, and we have decided that we would narrow the top width of the embankment to accommodate just for the motorized traffic and see what happens during the Phase Two public hearing or public process to see if a pathway goes on one side or both sides.
I'm not sure I understand. You say you, what was the compromise then? You eliminated some, something, some part of the plan?
Right, the embankment width of the transition, the 700-foot transition, initially was wide enough, the way it's laid out in the DSR is wide enough to accommodate future pathways on both sides. We've held the meeting with the concerned resident, and as a compromise, we've decided that during, for the Phase One project, we would narrow the embankment wide enough just for motorized traffic. Once we start the public process for Phase Two, and we decide, or the public helps us decide, to see which pathway we need, both sides or just one side, then we would expand the typical section. But the width of the embankment and the subsequent right-of-way acquisitions, the way it's laid out in the DSR, didn't have anything to do with the size of the roundabout.
Okay, so there would, there would be a change in the existing, the plans that we see it then, potentially, and that there won't be an eight, there may not be an eight-foot multi-use path on the south side then?
That remains to be seen once the Phase Two public process starts up.
I'm not clear. So for the Phase One that's before us, would there be paths on both sides?
West of West Park Drive, there wouldn't be any paths.
West of West Park Drive? All right, I think I got it. Commissioner Dean?
I apologize. It's been long enough. I've forgotten what my comment was going to be.
All right, we'll get back to you if you're ready. Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you. Through the chair, so if I could just follow up on your last comment, because I think that is partly, partly the crux of what we're talking about here, is there's a comment on page 32, right just above section 7.3, and it just says, "The roadway embankment will be constructed wide enough to accommodate two separate pathways for Phase Two if that preferred alternative is carried forward." You're saying that is, that is what is in effect changing from the narrative?
Correct.
And I guess, I'm still trying to figure out the purpose of the road project right now. I thought I read somewhere that there was, the roadway will exceed capacity in 2025 and 2035, and maybe I missed that, but I was under the impression that maybe it wasn't such a high-priority roadway right now. But when you read the comments, and if you know the area, what I really think the project was about was getting this roadway extended in some pedestrian facilities down to, you know, arguably our largest regional park or one of our largest, you know, a big destination and growing all the time. And so I'm just sort of left to say, boy, we're approving a concept that doesn't really get at the heart of what the concept needs to be addressing, which is how are we eventually going to get bikes and pedestrians? going to get bikes and pedestrians down the street towards Kincaid Park? How are we going to transition from an urban to a more, to a less urban, whether it's one side of the street or both? I understand that's a, that's a tough issue to crack, but that's kind of, you know, I really like that in this, in this study, you have the visualization piece that lays that out. I think that's a really cool-looking tool. I wish that tool was used to sort of explore how this area transitions, so we know what we were buying off on. Right now, we're buying off on a third of, a third of a mile of a roadway that we don't know if it's going to fit with the rest of the roadway or not. And I think that's what we're all struggling with. That's what the community comments seem to struggle with. I guess, I guess I'm, I'm a little bit torn on it. Generally, what you've just indicated to me makes me feel a little bit better, but boy, it seems like a lot of effort having been expended just to get to the point where the work gets hard. Thank you.
Well said.
Commissioner Ferguson.
I'm looking on page 23, and it shows the typical preferred right-of-way. And it appears to me that we're building a trail with maybe a little bit of highway. We have two 11-foot travel lanes, which make up 22 feet. We have two five-foot bike lanes, two foot of a curb and gutter section, a seven-foot section, and then an eight-foot and 10-foot multi-use pathway. And so we end up with 72 feet for 22-foot a car. And we're using the term multi-use pathway, which to me means it's pedestrians and bicycles and skateboarders and everything else. It's multi-use. So why do we have a multi-use pathway and a bike lane?
Through the chair, when the municipality upgrades a roadway, the roadway is a public facility that has to serve all the users. The multi-use pathway and the bike pathway are, they're for two different users. You have your utility bicyclists, and then you have your recreational bicyclists. The utility bicyclists, people who commute, they want to be on the roadway or a separated pathway, so that there's not a lot of conflicts with walkers, strollers, people in wheelchairs. It's for the safety of all the different types of non-motorized users that there's two different types of facilities.
You've got two multi-use pathways and two bike lanes. That's four different paths for that, for people to go. And I don't know if you've answered my question. I just, why don't we get rid of the bike lane and go with the multi-use pathway?
Through the chair, the on-street bike shoulders, as they're called, can be striped for on-street bicyclists, the utility bicyclists, the bike racers, the roller skiers who prefer to be on the roadway and not in conflict with someone with a stroller, a child, or walking their dog. The on-street bike shoulders, you can't have two-way bike traffic sharing the same shoulder. There's not enough room, especially with the 18-inch gutter pan between the curb and where that shoulder starts. So in essence, you really only have three feet of bike shoulder that you can be on that would be safe if you've got a road bike with a small tire, for example. And you, it's pretty hard to have two-way traffic on that bike shoulder that's on the street. We're also trying to implement the bike plan, which shows a shared roadway and the West Anchorage District Plan, which has facilities on both sides.
Does this road have non-school bus, bus traffic or bus routes on the road at all?
Through the chair, I understand your question. Does this roadway have people mover bus?
The good word, yes.
At this, through the chair, at this time, there is no people mover bus service for this area. It may be a consideration in the future as the area builds out with the duplexes and multifamily housing that's proposed for the north, excuse me, south side of the last phase of West Park subdivision and the Diamond Sands subdivision, is what we understand. That may be duplexes or multifamily housing, so a higher density.
The school buses stop in the middle of the travel lane, and they have the red lights, and I believe that that's the accepted norm. The metro, people mover buses normally have a pull-off for the bus stop. Where would you accommodate that pull-off for the bus stop?
Currently, if you look at your typical section, there is that seven-foot buffer area that if, for example, people mover sees that there's a need for this section of West Diamond to have a bus stop, as ridership goes up, there would be room to redesign the seven-foot buffer area for just that.
It just seems to me we're using up an awful lot of real estate to build the road. And it concerns, it really does. When you take a look, what we're trying to do is 22 feet, and we managed to use up 72 feet. It seems to me that we're wasting an awful lot of real estate to build a road. Thank you.
Through the chair, may I just respond really quickly? We actually have the right-of-way for the roadway section, and we've talked to maintenance, both with DOT and the municipal maintenance crew, in working on this design study report. And one of the important questions was, is there a safe place for cars to pull over? Well, we do have two 11-foot travel lanes, that's 22 feet. The shoulders also provide a safe place to pull over, as well as snow storage. So the seven-foot buffer, as we're proposing, can also act as the snow storage areas that are required. Thank you.
Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to applaud the buffer. I think it's finally recognizing that we live in a winter city, and we got to put the snow somewhere, and that people recreate, in fact, in the winter. They don't, in fact, almost more so, if you look at some of these areas. I'd also like to invite Mr. Ferguson to go biking with me with my six- and five-year-old one day, and the next day, go biking with Mr. Mulcahy, and understand that there's different, different ways to get there on two wheels. I guess, my question still has to do with where we're headed in the future and knowing that the Jodhpur Trailhead is up ahead in the next phase. If you were to have in Phase Two, an understanding that you're only going to have a trail on the north side of the road, would the city endorse a crossing at Jodhpur to get across from the path there to the trailhead? In other words, a non-signalized crossing at that form of, so is, because if the answer is no, then to me, you're only ever going to have trails on both sides of this street. But if the city's going to be open to it, and that's in fact a large part of what we're sort of gearing this project towards, then I'll feel a little bit better moving forward with this phase.
Through the chair, all the possibilities are open at this point. If we, as we work on Phase Two, and it comes down to only one pathway on one side of the roadway, there will need to be a crossing somewhere along that Jodhpur section, so that residents and walkers, bikers, kids, five and six, can cross safely over to the park. And I just want to clarify that while West Diamond Boulevard is one of the access roads to get to one of our most popular parks, the main entrance to the park is actually Raspberry, but this section does serve different users of the park and is, is an important destination as well.
Thank you. Can I get a nod, John, that it's a possibility that we'd consider it? Thank you.
Commissioner Dean.
Through the chair, do, during this process, do you guys consider at all the required maintenance costs on this type of road design versus other road designs? Is that part of the whole budgeting process? Do they? And the reason I ask is roundabouts are incredibly difficult to plow, because you have not just the road itself, you have the roundabout, the center circle, you have the medians that have to be plowed also. They're very difficult to do. It's not like you just run a plow down and clear it all. Now you've added sidewalks on both sides, and you have bike lanes, too. So just curious if you guys have looked at the additional cost of going to a roundabout versus a four-way stop or a stoplight? Has that been addressed at all?
Through the chair, yes, we have. And actually, we worked with maintenance and operations staff from both the municipality and DOT. DOT has a winter maintenance responsibility for West Diamond, even though it's a municipally-owned road. DOT owns Sand Lake and Jodhpur, the two ends of the projects also. We do have concurrence from DOT on the roundabouts and the roundabout size, as well as the maintenance. We have the agency comments at the back of your DSR packet, and we would not have proceeded without DOT's concurrence on both the maintenance and the design of the roundabouts for the proposed preliminary design.
What do you mean by concurrence? I'm asking whether you guys have looked at the difference in costs for the various types of road design. I don't know, understand what you mean by concurrence.
Through the chair, I apologize. We do not have the difference in cost between maintaining a roundabout versus maintaining a collector roadway without a roundabout. I misunderstood your question.
So we don't have any idea how much more it will be to maintain this road section versus other types? Okay. That's fine if you don't. I just wondered if you did.
We don't have any. I'm sorry, we don't have any information.
I don't see any more questions, anything on here? No more questions, so thank you. The matter now rests with the commission. What is the wishes of the commission? Commissioner Robinson?
On the matter of case 2013-152, draft design study report for Public Road, West Diamond Boulevard, West Park to Sand Lake Road, I move to approve with the condition that, in fact, the design does not include pathways west of the West Park roundabout, and that that will be handled in Phase Two, along with the rest of the roadway design.
No path on the west side, west of West Park?
I think, that's right. I'm just attempting to clarify what I heard here, which was that initially, the roadway was going to accommodate two separated pathways for Phase Two. But what I heard here tonight is that would not be predetermined, since that roadway is not designed yet, and so there really wouldn't be any north or south roadway extending beyond the roundabout as part of this design portion. That would come with Phase Two, along with the rest of the design for Phase Two, up to Jodhpur.
Okay. I have a motion. Do we have a second? Need a second for further discussion? Commissioner Robinson, you want to speak to your motion?
Well, my motion is essentially to accept the plan as it's currently written, with the modification that we heard from the municipality's petitioner and project manager here tonight. That's what's on the table. I remain, I continue to have some issues with the fact that even from just a design standpoint, we can't fully envision a project and then just go after the funding for the construction in phases. To me, that's better planning, but this is what's presented in front of me. I'm prepared to sort of accept that, at least for the West Park area, it's developing clearly as a suburban-type area. The context seems somewhat appropriate. I think the challenge for the designer is going to be in the second phase, and I hope here that this design does not just get pushed forward to the second phase just because it's done already, but we actually look at the Phase Two, you know, in the context that it exists.
Commissioner Ferguson.
I will not be supporting the motion for a couple of reasons. One, I think it will cost about at least 20% more, in my opinion, due to added engineering, doing an added, a longer project, additional procurement cost. And from the contractor's standpoint, the contractor's going to have to mobilize twice and do a whole bunch of work twice. And I think it should be, you know, we should be as cost-effective as we can on these projects. And so I think this Phase One, Phase Two, we should, we should figure out what we're doing. I didn't build the first floor of my house and then come back and say, I'll build the second story when I figure out how the first floor works. That, and then the second pack, and I understand what you were saying about the bicycle paths, people travel at different speed, but it seems to me that we need to be a little more compact in our right-of-way section, and we seem to get this thing, you know, everybody wants a little bit more and a little bit more, and we went to wider multiple-use paths because we could get out of the bikes, the bikes off the road, because we could put them on the path. So we went to a wider path, and then all of a sudden, well, we need the wider path, but we still need a wider road, because the bicycles are back in the road. It just, I think that we need to be frugal. I recognize and understand that this is a 20, we're looking 20, 25 years in advance, and all of our glasses get pretty foggy there. But I will not be supporting the motion for those reasons.
Commissioner Spring?
I won't be supporting the motion either. There's, I have some, some problems with the, the issue I didn't bring up with the projections for the travel ADTs in the future, and they seemed high to me. There's some segments where they basically double in size, and I didn't, it always frustrates me that I don't see some of the detail in the, in their calculations to justify it. So it's hard to argue against it, but doubling the amount of traffic on almost every segment of the road along West Diamond, doesn't seem like that's going to happen to me. And if that's, design's based on that, then I'm having trouble with the design. Also, I'm disturbed that plans that are done, the bicycle plan in particular, is ignored in the West Anchorage Plan, when there was tremendous amount of input from the bicycle community on that plan, and there seemed to be acceptable to them that there be a multi-use path on one side of the street and shared roadway for the rest of it to Kincaid Park. So this design obviously contradicts the bicycle plan, and I'm wondering if there needs to be more justification for that.
Any further comments? If not, we'll use our machines. And make sure. So that fails, so an individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except Commissioner recommendations to the Assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the Clerk's Office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which Commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. Is that correct, Mr. Weaver? We all right on the appeal process?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. And now we'll move on to public hearings, so I'll leave the public, read the public hearing procedures. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including petitioner's reps, can have 10 minutes. Representative groups have five minutes. Individuals, three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. I just read the appeal rights, and we'll read them based on the case. So with that, we will move on to the first public hearing case. Case 2013-145, Municipal Anchorage Parks and Rec Department rezoning to PLI Public Lands and Institutions. Lands and Institutions District. Do I have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is a municipal request to rezone three parcels comprised of about 1.8 acres of R2M zone property to PLI for lots 5, 6, 7, Block 14 Roosevelt Park subdivision. The surrounding property is primarily R2M zoned. It has a mixture of single-family, multifamily duplex in the area, and you've got Taft Park to the north, but the history on the property, the property was platted in 1947. The ranch-style structure that's on the existing two lots was constructed in 1960. The property was zoned in 1971 by the Greater Anchorage Area Borough. The municipality purchased the lots in 1982. The park was, property was dedicated as a park in 1984. The R2M district was created in 1985, and that's the history of the property. There was a previous application on the property to rezone the property to multifamily. That request was pulled in basically to confer with the department, Parks Department, and the Lions Club to determine actually what would be in the best interest of the public to proceed, and at that time, it was determined that the best interest would be to rezone the property to park purposes. It would be PLI, and it would have a P designation when the Assembly actually does rezone the property. There is an ish, there is an issue from the, by the neighborhood with respect to the use of the park property. Lions Club has used it for decades. The, it's not utilized for park purposes to any great degree, and the community has concern that the, there be some functionality for the community to the park, and one of the provisions that we're going to recommend this evening, I'm going to modify one of the special limitations that actually does that provision. This, this property will, in all likelihood, be on the ballot, the April ballot, for a long-term lease to the Lions Club, and should that occur, they would move forward with their project to build a new structure there. The, as with most municipal properties, with school district properties and parks properties and other properties, it's our intent to move forward to zone them, not perhaps in an area-wide zoning, but to bring all the properties into the correct zoning district, and we believe that this is the correct zoning district. It's in conformity with the comp plan, and we would recommend approval of that. Subject to these two special limitations is modified, the first special limitation requiring a public hearing on any structure over 1,000 square feet, but adding to the end, end of the sentence to address traffic circulation and public access to the park. And two, that's the only special limitation, and two, an effective clause of the rezoning that the property be platted into a single parcel which is presently underway. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Ferguson?
One question for SCAD. 1,000 square foot is a very small structure, wood, and I'm trying to, I haven't figured this in all any case. What would be the impact if I change that to 6,000?
Square feet.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ferguson, I don't know the exact size of the structure for the proposed Lions facility, but I believe it's about 2,500 square feet.
I, just 1,000 square feet isn't...
20, 2,500 square feet would work as well.
Okay. 2,500 is, is as good as 30, as 3,000. Thank you.
Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you. Is, is any kind of new clubhouse permitted in the R2M zoning district as is?
Well, the current, the current code in the PLI district allows as by right use headquarters and administrative offices of charitable and similar quasi-institutional public organizations of non-commercial nature, and we would consider the Lions Club this facility.
So, it's, is it a similar use? There's some references to whether they, had they pursued a conditional use in the R2M, would it, would a, would such a similar use be permitted in the R2M or not with a conditional use permit?
Let me get back with you, Mr. Tyler.
Sure, and, and one last question, and maybe this, I don't know if Parks is going to address this, but what, why, why do we wish to maintain ownership and lease to Lions Park? Why not just sell, sell the land to a private clubhouse and they can pursue whatever, you know, they wish to pursue? Our desire, I take it, is to lease the land, and that's what's on the, to be on the ballot rather than a straight disposal?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tyler, Parks can speak, speak to it. Holly is here this evening. It's only to lease a portion of the park, it's not to lease the entire park.
Great.
That's why we believe, I believe, that they can make provisions for the community to use the rest of the area that's not being utilized for that facility.
And do we, are we specifying here this evening sort of how, how much or what type of use that would be, or just sort of in premise setting aside, when they come in for their site plan, there'd be some portion that would be more public versus private use?
Correct, the latter.
Thank you.
Commissioner Spring?
Uh, yes, to staff. On page 78 of the packet, there's an ordinance that dedicates this property as a, for permanent or long-term park or recreational purposes. And I guess my question is, I don't understand how a Lions Club can be allowed on this piece of property with that stipulation by ordinance. Lions Club doesn't appear to be utilizing their property for recreational use. It's, what I understand from reading the packet is that it looks like they want to expand it and become a storage for their social service organization. I don't see that that's a recreational use and much less a park use. So, I'm wondering, how can we approve this rezoning, knowing that the rezoning is going to be used to allow expansion of the Lions Club?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Spring, the code, zoning code, PLI allows the use. The designation of P, the small P, to the PLI simply says it's dedicated park. We, in discussion with legal, we've not seen, and it hasn't been determined, that it is an inconsistent use with the zoning district, albeit it is zone park, and that's one of the reasons that we're putting it forward to the vote of the people.
That was my other question. You actually answered my other question, which was what the significance of PLL P is, but my original question was ordinance on page 78, which dedicated the park, dedicated it to, as a long-term park or recreational uses. It seems like that was the intent of the Assembly, and I wouldn't want to speak for the Assembly, God forbid, but it looked like, according to the ordinance, the way it was written, that they intended this to be a park or used for recreational uses.
There, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Spring, there's no question about that, they did.
So, I don't understand how they can, well, would the ballot measure rescind this ordinance? And would it cause it to be no longer valid? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the ballot measure would temper the, the original ordinance.
It would rescind the original?
It would temper.
Okay. Uh, second question deals with the Lions Club's storage. Is there any idea about how much, you said you want to resolve the traffic circulation issue later as part of a site plan review? The, is there any possibility that we can't resolve a traffic issue? And if we can't resolve the traffic issue, what do we do with this rezoning? I mean, say, for instance, there's, they're going to use it for storage, and there's truck traffic that needs to access that storage facility, and it becomes quite a burden on the, it's, or the local streets can't really accommodate trucks of that size or something. Is there any way we can address it if it's, seems, other than create a collective street in the vicinity of it?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Spring, you would do that at that time when you have the specifics before you make that determination? You may not allow that particular portion of that use.
So, we can deny then the, the site plan and recommend denial of it and not allow the, the use, Lions Club use on that site then?
Not the use, but the impact of the use.
So, we can't deny the use, but we can reduce the size, maybe?
Possibly.
Okay.
Any further questions for staff? And I think, we said we have a petitioner rep, Parks rep. Come on forward, state your name, spell if necessary. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Holly Spoth Torres, S.P.O.T.H., Hyphen Torres, T.O.R.R.E.S., and I'm the Park Superintendent. Jerry covered most, most of what I wanted to say here, so I'll, so I'll keep it pretty brief, but basically, since 1982, 1984, the Lions Club have, they've been operating at this facility for the past 30 years, and our intent with this is to assist them to provide the same and even better services to the community that they've been providing for the last 30 years in the same location. To address something that somebody else, I think, I think you may have asked Tyler, the, our, our other intent with this is to help the Lions Club be a better neighbor to the community. To be frank, we haven't heard anything, we haven't heard complaints about how the park looks, some complaints about how, how it functions a little bit, but not any about how the park looks. So, until about a month ago, when the Director attended a Spinnard Community Council meeting, but we're promising to help the Spinnard Lions be better neighbors, whether it's access as a public, to the public park, the way it looks, the way it's maintained. There will be conditions within their lease agreement that places maintenance responsibilities onto the Lions Club, so we're promising to make it function better for the community. If you go through the park plan, you'll see that for the level of service that we provide for neighborhood parks in the Spinnard area, we're deficient in neighborhood park facilities. So, that's one reason why it doesn't make sense for us to sell dedicated parkland. I don't like to make that a practice anyway, to sell dedicated parkland, but I think that there's a lot of opportunity to provide more access to the property, to the creek, through this parcel. We're committed to working with the Spinnard Community Council to define the elements that would make it better for the community, and I'll leave it at that.
We have some questions, ma'am, if you'll stay, ma'am? We have some questions from the commissioners, so Commissioner Robinson, questions?
Thank you, through the Chair. I was also at a Spinnard Community Council meeting not too long ago, and I won't speak for council members, but I, I saw somebody come up and make a presentation related to Roosevelt Park and a matching grant that she had, and she wasn't very far along, but she was trying to access those Park Foundation dollars to put in. I think it was a basic swing set. It was pretty modest, right? And so, I took that to mean there wasn't a lot of facilities, but there is this park kind of directly across the street. So, simple question is, given the deficiency, and I know once you give up parkland, you can't, you can't, it's very hard to get something back, but, but why not explore some, some opportunity to sell it and improve the park that, that's already there in the neighborhood? And so, maybe acknowledging you can't, can't do everything. And then the second part, it's kind of related, but if you will, describe the creek interface through this parcel if you can.
Through the Chair, to address your first question, Roosevelt Park is tiny. It's half an acre. I, I think that the area would be served with just keeping the parkland that it has. It, half an acre is a little too small. They're, they're adding a very tiny swing. The interface, the second question, interfacing with the creek. I, I think through a future lease agreement, I believe that the Spinnard Lions do mow right up to the creek, and I think we can probably address some creek health, some stream bank improvement projects through the lease agreement, if that's what you're getting at.
Yeah, I think so. And, so I guess to back up a second, I mean, if, if they're prepared to build a new facility and the city is deficient in parkland in that area, wouldn't this be a wonderful opportunity to say, "Thank you for our relationship. You're prepared to enter some sort of capital, you know, raising, you've got funds, and granted, you got to go get the land somewhere, but how about, how about now we think about a time for moving?" I mean, normally, we're trying to squeeze these things in when they're using the existing facility, and, I mean, this is an expansion. What a wonderful time to kind of clean up property and get a piece of land for the municipality.
I, I think that's a great idea. I don't think that's the idea that we're pursuing right now. The Spinnard Lions Club, the International Club, is one of the largest service organizations, and we think they've done a good job for our community as a whole, and I think that they're going to continue to be stewards of this neighborhood with our help. And you've seen the projects that we're doing all over the city, public, private partnerships. The result, the results are increased community engagement, and the long term is increased benefits for parks. And if you have creative thinkers like the Park Foundation in Roosevelt Park, the Spinnard Lions Club, the Department, the Community Council, we'll be able to figure out the best benefit. I, we're doing it all over town already, so you have my word that we'll do that with this parcel in the future. I don't know where all the money's coming from yet, but...
Great, thanks.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Through the Chair. I don't know specifically which walking path you're talking about. Can you lead me to the packet?
Comments we've received from Mary Lundey. We'd like to see the MOA take interest in our community as they have in the Lions Club by constructing a walkway path across Erie Park for pedestrian traffic.
Oh, so, through the Chair. How I interpret that maybe is that the resident wants increased access to the park. I could be wrong, but I think that's what we're, if they want to get to the creek, if they want to get to a picnic area, we would talk about our options to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Spring?
Yes, I just, I'm not that familiar with the Lions Club, except I think they do something with Vision, and it's the only thing I know about them. Is it, if you describe what kind of activities take place in the clubhouse as far as membership activities, and I know there's, it says there's no liquor license, so that's probably a good thing, but...
Through the Chair. I'm not, I, I know superficially what, what you know. I know in the past, they've done some food distribution, but, and I, I think the staff report has talked about how that is going to be either decreased or eliminated. Is that true? Eliminated? Yeah. So, in the past, there's been food distribution, but not into the future. They will continue their vision program and vision screening. Up to that, I don't, I don't have specifics.
But they have club meetings regularly, um, so...
Yeah.
Weekly? Weekly?
Yeah.
You don't know what the size of their...
I do not know that.
...station is or anything?
Commissioner Dean?
Through the Chair. Just so I understand, it's three lots that are currently not owned by the city or are owned by the city. They are currently owned by the city, and, you know, I, I've looked around that area, and at the south end of the three lots is, of course, Fish Creek. It's not big enough, or is it big? It's not big enough, or is it big enough, to jump across? I've not been actually to the side of the creek and looked in it.
I don't think I would.
Okay. I had no idea. So, but there is no bridge across Fish Creek, so there's no way to really connect the property from one end to the other for the neighborhood. But it would be nice if the neighborhood, I'm sure, had a bridge through there. Now, currently, what is the property used for? It's just got a house on it that the city rents out?
We lease it to the...
To the Lions Club right now? Okay. Now, parallel to Fish Creek is a bike trail, a paved bike trail that connects and loops around through that neighborhood. It looks like a very nice trail, and it connects the parks and stuff there. So what is the Lions Club going to do, or the City of Anchorage going to do, to make that particular trail connect to Roosevelt Drive or to Harding Drive, I guess it could be possibly, but it's probably more like Roosevelt Drive? Wouldn't that be a very nice thing for the neighborhood, to have some kind of a bridge across Fish Creek and really make this particular park much more usable to everybody around there?
Through the chair, I think that's a great idea. I don't know how we're going to do that yet, but I think it's a great idea. That's, it's one of the primary missions we work toward. It's connecting neighborhoods to their green belts. I don't have a mechanism to specifically do that yet, and I don't know if you can place that on the Spinnard Lions Club, but we can definitely look at it for future projects.
I haven't seen a site as built of how this particular building's going to sit on this lot, but it looks to me like there isn't going to be a great deal of space on this property for much else other than the building and parking.
Right.
So have we thought at all about a trail that would potentially go alongside the building to connect, to go across the bridge across Fish Creek, so that it could integrate with the other bike trail on the south side?
Through the chair. Commissioner Dean, I think, like I said, I think that's a great idea. Right now, we're considering a rezone for the park. If I understand this correctly, they're going to be required to go through a public facility site plan review or some sort of site plan review through this process. And I think that's going to be the time where you're going to want to see and comment on improvements like that.
Okay. So, okay, great. Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing and hearing none, thank you very much. So now, any public testimony? Anyone care to testify? Come on down, sir. Come up to the microphone, state your name, and spell it if necessary.
My name is William Marsh, M.A.R.S.H. And I'm the adjoining landholder to Erie Park. I can answer some of the site questions that you had earlier more accurately. And we're objecting to the rezone at this time without special limitations. What exists on this park is a small house with a footprint of under 1,000 square feet. It's used primarily as a meeting place. The proposed plan is to go to a 20-year lease and allow the Lions Club to build a 5,260 square foot building with over 50% of it to be warehouse. This is going to greatly increase the traffic on a road that has neither curbs, gutters, storm drains, or sidewalks. It does not abut a collector, and it will become solely the Lions Club property through the 20-year land lease. What we bought into was a home in a neighborhood with residential structure. That's what's sitting there now. We would greatly like to see special limitations on the size of any future construction. Less than 50% of this park is actually buildable. The creek bed wanders over almost one solid acre and is unbuildable with a sand base and creek in it, along with utility setbacks. So the creek access is virtually nil based on the topography. We'd also like to see them limit the access size with the number of people that can occupy the dwelling, something in keeping with what the neighborhood can handle would be somewhat around 20 to 30 people at a time. It's simply too small of a park, and it suffered greatly from neglect. Up until this year, it's spent two years without even a sign identifying it. I could answer any questions.
Do we have questions? Speaker?
Commissioner Robinson. Thank you for testimony. Do you, in a weird way, the rezone is to make it PLIP, which is sort of consistent with what a park is, but in an odd way, it allows it to be developed in something other than park? Can you at least speak to your view of this space as a park? I mean, do you think it's an appropriate, it's obviously dedicated park, whether you lived there before or after it was dedicated is sort of immaterial at this point, but it is dedicated parkland. Would you, are you open to some development that's purely park or residential? And that's what you're saying, that the character is either, in the neighborhood, is either to be parkland or residential, but not sort of this quasi-institutional use?
Well, that's exactly the heart of the matter. As it's zoned R2M, the current usage is non-conforming. If you look up the definitions, and we spent a great deal of time on it, the only reason the existing use is allowed is it predated the zoning. And we have all, as a neighborhood, accepted that. As a new structure, we should start all over again. But essentially, there is no park, and there has never been a park. The existing structure has been used as a clubhouse that was previously a home. We don't object to the Lions Club. Their operation is obviously great, but it's not the use of our neighborhood to provide a non-conforming structure deep inside an R2. Every other group like this occupies commercial space, Lutheran Social Services, VFW, Catholic Social Services, and on and on. They're all in commercial space. And that's the only objection the neighborhood has. It's going to become a warehouse with truck traffic and the attendant traffic that's going to go along with it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dean?
Through the chair. Could you clarify if Roosevelt Drive is paved?
I believe we just got paved. We do not have a full-depth pavement, is my memory. We do not have curbs. We don't have gutters. We do not have storm drains.
Did they call it rap?
I believe so. It happened quickly. We got notices two years ago. We went from chip and tar to another product.
I'm going to bet it was rap, which is recycled asphalt. Okay. Thank you.
Just quick, any other questions? Go ahead. Commissioner Spring, I'm sorry. About the...
How long have you lived in the neighborhood?
I've owned my home next door to this Erie Park for 12 years, 11 years.
In the park next door to you, this area next door to you, then, has never been used as a park per se, even though with the designation?
For most of the time, there isn't even a park sign on it. It has always been the Lions Club meeting house. It has never been open. Most of the neighbors don't know it's a park.
And how have they been as neighbors?
We have tolerated the traffic that comes with some of their usage because it existed before we moved in, and we're not complaining sorts of folks. They have moved in a 40-foot container van and stuck it in part of the parking, which creates more on-street parking. As we came here tonight, there's a modeling club meeting in the house, and there are parking on the road. Our road is not wide enough during snowfall to pass two vehicles, much less on-street parking, and that's been one of the bones of contention. And then this summer, they erected a blue tarp carport, and a non-conforming handicap ramp went in a couple of years ago. They're not bad guys. They're simply absentee. They don't live in our neighborhood. They have no ties to our neighborhood. People come, they recreate, they leave, and we deal with what happens there. That's why we're asking for special limitations on what happens, because once this goes to a public vote, the neighborhood issue will be overrun by the steamroller at the ballot. There's only six to 10 of us that are directly affected by this, but we are greatly affected.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Sir, currently, the special limitation is that if they want to build anything over 1,000 square feet, they've got to go through a public hearing, site plan review. Is that kind, what you're looking for in a special limitation?
I'd like it really stronger, because this has been going on for a year and a half for us. Last year, the MOA offered this park up to be rezoned R3 to allow the Lions Club to get a spot rezoning on the property that they own next door to the park. They own the lot next door to the park. But they cannot build a clubhouse with their current usage because the zoning doesn't allow it. The only way they're going to get this is through the PLIP and the public ballot. So I'm asking that this board put something really strong. Don't let them build a 5,000-square-foot structure. Let's hold it to a footprint of 1,000 square feet and an occupancy level, and let's put some teeth in it so the park remains a park. Remember, less than half of it is even actually able to be walked on. The rest of it's below floodplain.
Commissioner Spring has a question now, sir.
In your opinion, does this, is it lap-dated enough that it needs to be rebuilt?
My house is the same age, and I live in it, and I'm very proud of it. It's benign neglect. They don't want to continue to meet in the house. They want a warehouse. They want storage facilities. They want truck traffic. The house doesn't fill that need. That's why the move is to demolish it and construct a new building. Can I make one more point?
Go ahead.
Keep in mind that the Spinnard Rec Center is merely blocks away. We are not fulfilling a need here that isn't available less than a mile down the street.
All right. Thank you. I don't see anyone else in the queue. Appreciate your testimony. Thanks for coming down. Anyone else wish to testify? Anybody? Come on down, ma'am. State your name and spell it if necessary.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Marsh, M.A.R.S.H. My objections start on page 39 of your package, so I won't belabor all the issues. I just want to follow up by saying that, just to reaffirm what my better half said, is that we really are begging for special limitations now. We're in a real uncomfortable position to have to confront a gentleman's organization that's comprised of World War II veterans. And they do great charitable work, but they don't live in the neighborhood. And building a 5,000-square-foot building, even a 2,000-square-foot building, will just draw in so much traffic and change the complexion of our small, little neighborhood irreparably. It'll bring traffic past the house, School for the Blind. There's, is right on the direct path to where they want to build. There's assistant living houses nearby. The services they want to perform are not for our community. And it just doesn't, it doesn't belong there. When they had their food distributions, the streets were completely clogged. But neighborhoods, we don't want to complain about the Lions Club. How can you complain about somebody who's handing out free food? I contributed food, and I just understood it was a fact of life that one Saturday a month, you stayed home. But there's elderly who live on that street. Ambulances can't go by. And what they want to do is increase activity. Their original plans for the 5,000-square-foot building show commercial vehicles there. And we're just hoping to stop a mistake from happening. Because if we don't have severe limitations, and it goes to the public, everybody loves the Lions, the impact to our neighborhood will be lost in the discussion, and we'll be stuck with the building. So I think... Any clarifications or questions?
We do have a commissioner in the queue. Commissioner Robinson, you have a question?
I think, I just want to, so the zoning there is R2M, is that right? So R2M by the acreage that is on that lot would allow up to an eight-plex, eight units of housing on that lot. You're aware that by right, that would be allowed? That there is no, could you describe sort of the other, is it mostly single-family? Are you dealing with a mix of duplexes and triplexes? What's sort of the nature of the housing that's right there?
There is a mixture, but it's all residential, and it's very quiet. I went there Saturday nights at 1:00 in the morning before we bought the house, to make sure it was.
Right.
And like I say, it's just a real small, little street. And this is a pocket neighborhood park. And it's a dedicated park. And it hasn't really been used as a park, but it's, once again, it's a Lions Club. And it's, and my dad was a Lion. It's hard to complain. But when they want to ignore the fragility of that neighborhood and build a huge warehouse, it's just incomprehensible.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. No more questions. Appreciate your testimony. Anyone else care to testify in this matter? Anyone else at all? Yes, sir. Come on down, please, sir. Come on down. Give us your name and spell it if necessary.
Tom Blaze. I live in the vicinity. Matter of fact, lot nine and 10. Blaze is spelled G.L.A.Z.E., in case anybody had problems there. My concern, and we mentioned it earlier, but I don't think enough emphasis was put on it, and that is a path for pedestrians to be able to get from one part of the community to the other. The problem is now, people that, the kids that catch the school bus, people that try to get to the trail on the south side of the community, they actually use our lot to do that. We actually mow our grass and keep our lot clean, and the only place to cross the ditch, or the creek, rather, is through our lot. We've had some vandalism and few problems, but we can't keep people from crossing it. They actually think the lot that we own is the park, and if I try to put a fence up, they tear it down. So I'm very concerned, and so is Mary, my wife, that we do something to allow access to the park and the walkway in the back. Right now, it's only been mentioned, but pedestrians, the community is split in half if we don't provide some type of access across there. Yes, there is wetlands, but I think that can be, a bridge across the creek is very important. Any questions?
Yes, sir. We have someone in the queue. Commissioner Ferguson?
Glenn?
Yeah.
I'm looking at this app we have, Roosevelt Drive, right here.
Okay.
Where are you?
Do you have it going?
Do you have Roosevelt Drive?
I think I have it there.
Won't you understand that if you can orient us?
Where are you? I did a bad call. I'm just trying to orient what you said. Okay. Basically, his lot right here, and the access they're after.
On the colored map next to, back one page, on page 14, it indicates that one is vacant, I think? Is that the right color code?
Yes.
Yeah, on the colored one, it's got... Yeah, on the colored one, it's got.
I didn't see it.
Page fourteen?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Page fourteen shows the one to the west as being vacant. Yeah. If I read the color code correctly, and Ms. Dean's warning me that that's vacant.
Okay, okay. They must be here, yeah. That's what we're trying to get.
All right, so, so what we're trying to do is get a pathway from, I guess that's Roosevelt, the curved part of Roosevelt, down the west Tudor somewhere, connecting those.
Yeah, but it looks like it comes to the, comes to the park.
Yeah. Got it.
All we gotta do is make sure.
You want a pathway connecting them with a bridge over the stream that Ms. Dean talked about earlier? Okay, I'm tracking what you guys are doing.
I got it.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Blaze? Any other questions for Mr. or Mrs., I assume that's Mrs. Glaze or Mrs. Glaze, relative of some sort?
Oh, yeah. That's Mary London I'm talking to. I'm representing both of us.
You're fine, sir.
Yeah.
I don't see any other questions, so appreciate your testimony. Appreciate your patience with this while we understood your, your situation there. Any, anyone else wish to testify? Anybody else out there? Come on down, sir. All right, sir, your name, please?
Good evening. My name is Robert Auth, A-U-T-H. I'm the chair of the Spinnard Community Council. I also live not too far from this area, just on the other side of Northwood. We had a, we had a.
Excuse me, sir, are you representing the council?
I'm representing the council.
You are representing the council?
Yes.
Five minutes.
Okay. The council did, did discuss this at length at the November meeting. We had John Rada from the Parks Department. We had representatives from the Lions Club, and we had the neighbors, a lot of them that are, that are here today. And so it was sort of a three-way discussion about things. And the, the questions that were posed was, why, why is the city requesting this rezone? And we were told, it's a housekeeping issue only. It's only a housekeeping issue to keep, to conform it to the, to the actual use that's going on. And then we, and then questions were asked, what about, what about these plans in the future? We were told, there are no plans. Lions Club representatives said, there are no plans. Everybody said, there are no plans. So don't consider the plans. This is a housekeeping issue only. And on that basis, the, the council approved it by one vote after about an hour of discussion. But it was a very circular and frustrating discussion, because we weren't talking about the elephant in the room, which was, what's going to, why are we doing this? Why are we really doing this? And, and what's going to happen in the future? And how can we, how can we deal with that? And, and, and so it was very kind of unsatisfying kind of discussion. And I think it was a good airing of, of issues. And, and everybody kind of knew where everybody else stood on, on some issues. And it was, I think it was the first time in a public forum that, that all of these people had gotten together and at least talked about this, this. But, you know, from, you know, from the community council side, we're used to, if you're seeking a rezone, there's, there's some purpose for it. It can't be speculative. There must be a development plan. Let's see the plan. Let's evaluate the plan and its effect on the neighbors and what they think. And we weren't, kind of, we weren't allowed to talk about that, because there aren't any plans. I mean, that was, that was the discussion. So, so anyway, so that's, that's what, that's what occurred in November.
Well, we do have someone in the queue, but thanks for serving on community council. And if you go home after a council meeting feeling a little unsatisfied sometimes, we understand. I think Commissioner Dean, you're in.
Through, through the chair. I noticed you, your meeting agenda is in here in our packet on page sixty-three. And it says, the muni has applied to rezone the property commonly used as Ur Park. Is it Ur or Uri? See me now?
Yuri. I mean, I always thought it was Yuri Park, but I.
From R2M to PLI, the petition will go before us on November eighteenth, which it got delayed till now. According to the municipality's website, the park contains, consists of land and a building which was the former Uri residence, and which is currently used by the Spinnard Lions Club. According to the petition, the purpose of the rezone is to enable the correct zoning for the park. The petition also states that in the future, the Lions will be demolishing the old house and building a new community facility. The municipality has also applied to rezone the three lots, which will constitute Uri Park into one lot. That petition will go before the pledging board on December fourth, which was delayed to today. The matter will be discussed at the November meeting. So there was a little bit of a discussion of a community facility, but not a 5,000-foot.
Well, I was expecting something more, you know, some discussion, some presentation of a plan, along those lines. But there wasn't any.
Yeah, there's, there's a little bit in our packet, not a lot. It is dated 2012.
Right.
The buildings that are in our packet. So I don't know if they were preliminary drawings and, and they haven't pulled a permit for any of this. I'm assuming they haven't, because they couldn't, because they don't have the correct zoning in order to do that. So, but that, that was your meeting, though, on November sixth, and that's the most information you had at that point.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Commissioner Robinson?
Just out of curiosity, did the council at all talk about park-related facility or needs or access? You've talked about connecting the northern part of the neighborhood through, does that ever come up in the course of the conversation?
Well, it came up to the extent that it's never been used as a park before, and, and that a development as proposed conceptually would use up so much of the park that there wouldn't be much use, other use of the park. And it was, it was brought up that there are no facilities in the park, so there's really no, no recreating that goes on there, so.
Okay, Commissioner Spring?
Yes, through the chair. What, and, Mr. Auth, what's your opinion about the need for a park and the use of that particular, those parcels for park purposes?
Well, you know, most of, most of the parks in Spinnard are along Fish Creek. And so there's, you know, one project that I've been involved with, with a long time is, is trying to get a, a trail between Northwood and Spinnard that would come out and go under, under that bridge. And that would connect Fish Creek Park and Turnagain, go under Spinnard, that connection, cross Northwood, go to Red Bridge Park, you'd be into this area. The path that currently exists is in Red Bridge Park, and then this would connect it further. So it's always been sort of this dream of having a Fish Creek Trail that connects all of these pocket parks along there, so. But, you know, we didn't, we didn't really get into that in, in this discussion, but it's, it's, it's been brought up in other, in other discussions about, about it. You know, and that's, that's been, that has been the problem with a lot of these pocket parks in, in Spinnard, is that they don't all connect to each other. At least, I see it as a problem.
All right, thank you very much, sir. I don't see anyone else in the queue. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Come on down, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Auth, A-U-T-H. And I've been the land use chair for the Spinnard Community Council for many years in the past. I'm taking a little break, but I've always been interested in land use issues. I, I was present at the November meeting of the Spinnard Community Council. And if I may, I'd like to read what was, one of the things that, out of our minutes, Bob, meaning the former, the chair who just spoke, also asked, this is of Mr. Rada, also asked clarification where the future plans by the Lions are related to the current rezoning process. John said, no, this is more of a housekeeping matter. One of many muni-owned parcels in that position is not meant to specifically benefit the Lions, as the rezoning needs to happen regardless in order to maintain its intended use as a park. Further down, it says, a member asked if the future intent by the muni is to transfer the property to the Lions Club. John Rada explained that this is a misconception, and that, quote, "undedicating," close quote, "parkland requires a public vote, one set aside." One of the issues that I really have a lot of trouble with this, and I never thought I'd be speaking against a park dedication, but, or rezone, is this whole process. The Spinnard Community Council is probably one of the most active in the muni, and we really try to stay on top of this. And yet, even with people in, in our community that try to find out what the issues are before us, what the intents are, both with park, municipality, and the Lions, I feel like we were never spoken to plainly and clearly about this issue. Because one week after this, there's a full plan for the Lions Club, which is exactly what they introduced to us a year and a half ago in 2012. And then a week later, Assemblyman Tim Stuhl introduces an ordinance to dispose of the land. I mean, this one is AO 2013-113 with the heading, An Ordinance of the Anchorage Assembly, Amending Anchorage Municipal Code 25 dot 30 dot 025 to revise the time required for public notice before a vote on the disposal of certain municipal parkland, and shortening the notice period for a proposed lease of land in Yuri Park to the Spinnard Lions Club. My feeling as a member of the community is, this is a done deal, or this is trying to be done. There's already talk about this is going to be on the ballot. And I feel like the community hasn't even had an opportunity to address what exactly is going on here. It's, it's not just a big impact on a, on a very small neighborhood that is, is very much deprived of recreational resources, but it's also the larger issue of what, I'm sorry.
If you can summarize?
What, what they have planned for that area. And my concern is that it's moving so quickly that we're all trying very hard to catch up. And so I'm, I'm very concerned about how fast this is moving, and we haven't had an opportunity, or the community, to address it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't see any questions in the queue. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Anyone else at all? I think we will then close the public hearing, and the matter now rests with the board. No, I'm sorry, we have, you have time, Mrs. Spoth Torres. Close enough? Spoth?
No.
Spoth Torres.
Yeah, it's perfect.
And you have plenty of time, like seven minutes, I think it was.
Seven minutes, you said?
I think it was seven forty-three or something. You have plenty of time. Go ahead.
I guess I just want to summarize by saying, I understand, I understand the concerns that the community has about a facility like, like this. It's change in the neighborhood. And there, there are specific processes that need to happen in order for an organization to make a significant investment in a facility. And it's hard to communicate what those things are to the public as we do them. And so it's hard to have the answers that the community wants to make them feel secure that what is going to happen in their neighborhood is actually what is consistent with why they chose to live there. That said, I'm going to say what I said already, is that, well, this is something I haven't said. There's eight goals that are outlined in our, in our park plan. And one of them that I haven't talked about so far is public-private partnerships. And we depend a lot on other organizations in this community in order to help us maintain the facilities that we have. Now, I don't want to stand up here and make excuses about having more than we can maintain, because I actually think we're doing a really great job at maintaining what we have right now. We've actually improved in the last five years, I would say. But facilities, a facility like a house, sometimes those are things that we, we don't, we don't do so well. So we rely on other organizations that have positive philanthropic missions to do that. Now that we know that it hasn't really, that the community might not be as happy with the relationship as they thought they were, we're committed to working forward through the lease agreement and putting conditions on the lease agreement that make the Spinnard Lions Club accountable for how the property looks, how it's maintained, how big the parking lot is, what can happen there, and the public's access to it. Because even though I know people say it's small and there's wetlands and you can't get across the creek, we can, we can figure all those things out and make those things work for the neighborhood, but it's going to take some, some work. Like I said, right now, we're here to rezon the park, and we, we can't even move forward without doing that. So I think, I think it would be a bad move not to move forward from here. And that's, I'll, I'll end there.
We have several in the queue. Ms. Dean?
Through the chair. I, I think what the issue is, is that you're going to be putting in the middle of a residential neighborhood, a 5,000-foot warehouse multi-use facility that will be owned by a corporate entity, which is a nonprofit. Their members will come and go, and their boards will come and go. The use of the facility could change over time, pretty dramatically. And that's the whole thing, too, is we don't know. I mean, tomorrow, they could say, you know what, we're going to make this into a bigger-than-5,000-foot building. We're going to go ahead and make this into a 10,000-foot building. We're going to open this up as a school. We're going to open this up as whatever it may be. And it's in the middle of a residential neighborhood on a rap-covered street that doesn't really have good parking. I could see by looking at the, the, the drawings that you do have for the buildings and the layout of the lots, there isn't a great deal of parking, which would put the parking, a large part of it, on the street. I could count 11 parking spots, and then a parking spot for a truck in front of a bay door. That's it. I mean, that's not a lot. You have a bunch of people show up for a meeting. Where are you going to put them all? I mean, I know that we're not doing a site plan review today. My concern is, you know, what is it going to be for the people at a later date? And once we make that conversion to PLI, you know, it does open it up to just about anything. You know, maybe you guys decide not to have an agreement with the Lions Club, and it's something else entirely. Yeah, it would be nice to have a, a trail that goes through there and a nice bridge crossed. I didn't realize it was such a tough creek to cross. But, you know, I, I dealt with a rezon in my own neighborhood, across the street from my home, and it was very frustrating to suddenly potentially look at something completely different than what had been originally zoned for. So I, I understand where the neighbors are coming from. And do you understand where they're coming from, what their frustration is, that they don't know long-term what they can end up with?
I do, because we, we're, we're in the middle, right? We deal with, we deal with the neighborhood. We deal with the Lions Club, too. We have an annual lease agreement with them. At this point, the current facility doesn't meet their needs. And I also listened to the gentleman who has a home that was built at the same time in the 50s, 60s. And so I understand that if, if an organization maintains their facility, maybe it would still meet their needs now. But what we're dealing with is exactly what you, what you've, you've said. It was an old house that wasn't theirs to begin with. They only have an annual lease. They're not able to get money because they only have an annual lease. A 20-year lease agreement that allows them to have sustainable funding, and a 20-year lease agreement with us kicks it into a different level where they have greater responsibilities to maintain that property. And I believe that they will do that. An annual lease from an old house that wasn't theirs is a different story. So I think what you're seeing is a higher level of commitment from the organization.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Who currently does the maintenance on the park?
The Lions Club.
Okay. So Parks Rec doesn't do anything currently with the park?
No. We just installed a sign, though.
Okay.
And, and if I would have known that the sign wasn't there a long time ago, they would have had a have had a sign a long time ago.
And after, as part of this lease agreement, it would also cover the maintenance of the park continuing going forward?
Yep. And through the chair, those things are negotiable, too, depending on the assets, other recreational assets that are built.
I've got a question for staff, but I'll let anybody ask her any questions before we go to that, too.
Well, yeah, I think we have another commissioner in the queue. Commissioner Robinson, you want to add some questions?
I do. Thank you. Through the chair. Can you tell me, do you know anything about the history of the house? Was the house granted by a family to the Lions Club, or was it granted by somebody to Parks and Rec as a park use and later? I mean, I think that, you know, do we have anything that traces back the intent of what the purpose of this transaction was?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Robinson, from my conversation with staff that worked on this and talking to people is that there was no conveyance of land for specific park purposes when we originally acquired it, either with or without the house. And it would have had the house there, so there was no specific conveyance that it'd be used only for park purposes. We did look at the title.
So, it somehow came to the municipality, and from there, it went down to Parks and Rec's management of it? Is that how that?
I'm not exactly sure, but we know that it wasn't specifically conveyed and entitled as park.
Second question, probably, for staff. Can you, is a park an allowed use in the R2M zoning district?
Yes.
And when you talk about conditions for site plan approval, or we're recommending a special limitations that has a site plan, and when we were having this conversation, you know, we were talking about how we can't limit the use at that point, because it would be an allowed permitted use within the PLIP, but that you could have a special limitation that dealt with the site plan. Can that special limitation all deal with the conditions of use, or simply the way that the site plan is? In other words, when I hear a 5,000-square-foot facility that's not residential, in the middle of a residential lot, it feels more to me like a conditional use permit. But I know, but it's not a conditional use, because it's a permitted principal use in the district. Are there allowed to be conditions that deal with the sort of characteristics of use, hours of operation, all of those sorts of things?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Robinson, I believe those would be, you know, pertinent types of limitations that could be imposed with special limitation, but not the use itself.
Okay.
And to answer your first question from earlier in the evening, in the R3 district, it was a conditional use.
That this type of use was a conditional use in R3. It's not in R2M, but it's a permitted use in the PLIP.
And this got, you know, that original request, it really got ahead of itself by the Lions Club processing and submitting it. It just wasn't the proper way to zone municipal property that's parked. That's why it was withdrawn.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Weaver. You said, so you think it would be appropriate for a special limitation on characterization of use, but not specific use? Is that, you want to hear that, Craving? Okay. All right, thank you. Commissioner Strike?
Yes, this is a question for staff. On the, if this motion, if this is passed, and we have limitations, how enforceable are those limitations? And I open that up generically, because would we see an end run down the road that the Lions Club might come back and try to stretch that limitation at a later date? And would we be back here in front of this commission, or?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Strike, if it moves forward to the assembly, and you have special limitations, that's the ordinance that'll be prepared that's presented to the assembly. And unless they modify at the assembly, those provisions would stand, and they would be enforceable by code enforcement.
Thank you.
Commissioner Spring?
Yes, a question to staff. So, in a PLI district, the charitable organization is permitted. I think that was established. But is a warehouse permitted in a PLI?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Spring, a warehouse would not be permitted, but, you know, there are certain ancillary uses that go to the principal permitted use, and at some point in time, it becomes bigger than the principal use, and all those things would need to be evaluated. I don't think the Lions Club has finished their drawing. They have some pretty detailed ideas of where they were going before, but I would suggest you look at those when they come back to you on the site plan.
Well, I guess my question is, if the 50, over 50% of the facility is used as a warehouse, would that be considered to be a warehouse?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Spring, it's starting to push the envelope, yes.
I don't think I have any more questions for you right now, but don't go away. I'm not sure. Jim, yours is for staff, and then Stacy's is for staff. Go ahead, Jim.
Okay. Question for staff. Under R2M, we've got three lots. They could build a triplex on each lot. Is that correct? My question is more, what is the maximum number of parking areas, parking spots would be required under the current zoning for the three lots?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Ferguson, I haven't looked at it in detail, but the general gross square footage, they would have 20, 40, 60,000 square feet. It says it's 1.5, 1.8 acres. That would be eight units on each lot.
Okay, so, it would, under permitted use on R2M, they could easily build something bigger than a total of 5,000 square feet?
Yes.
Yeah, but, I mean, I'm not.
There's a lot coverage of 35%, 30%, I think, in the district.
Okay, but they probably could. If they built the 5,000-square-foot, and I recognize and understand that we don't know exactly what the configuration is, what the use is, what would be the required parking?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ferguson, it depends on the size of the units.
Okay, I'm talking about, if we rezone it to the PLIP, 5,000-square-foot, then what would be the required parking?
For that type of use, it depends on the exact uses in there, and the storage, and it's about one per 300 square feet, I believe.
So, it'd be roughly 16 spaces?
Close to that.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Dean, you still?
Through the chair. My question is of staff. I'm a little confused on paperwork. On page 45, there was a request to rezone from R2M to R3, and it was turned down because it was less than the 1.75 acres required for the zoning map amendment. So, it says it's less than 1.75 for those three lots, yet when I turn to the front page of our packet, it says it's 1.81 acres. What is the acreage? Because I have a little trouble reading some of the plans, the maps of the properties. My eyes aren't that good anymore, and I'm having a little trouble telling exactly are we at, under 1.75 or over 1.75 for those three lots? I'm a little confused.
I think the discrepancy is that originally, the Lions Club has the lot to the immediate west, and without that lot, it fails to be 1.75 acres. But this zoning is appropriate because it is contiguous and adjacent to PLI to the north.
There's PLI across the street?
PLI to the north, Little Park to the north.
It looks like a house. I couldn't see it on there. Yes, I can see it across.
It is confusing.
Yeah, it is very. I'm just trying to understand how it all works, because it is, it does say lots 5, 6, 7, and 8 on page 45 in one paragraph, then the next paragraph says just lots 5, 6, and 7. Now, on our situation, we're doing 5, 6, and 7, so shouldn't that be under 1.75?
I believe it is. I think there's a discrepancy in those figures, in the 1.75 and the 1.81, but we'll determine what the exact square footage is. But it's a loud request because it's contiguous with the PLI to the north.
It's kitty-corner. It's not really truly, I don't know. I look at it, and I don't really see it as directly across the street. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Strike?
Thank you. For the staff, I'm going back and looking on page 45 on the July 2, 2012, same one Ms. Dean was referring to. The petition to rezone lots 5, 6, 7, and 8, rezoning from R2M to R3 at the time was made, and at the time, it was noted, lots 5, 6, and 7 are dedicated parklands. So, before the city came forth a rezoning to rezone a dedicated parkland, knowing that we were going to go from R2M to R3, which failed for another reason, not the fact that it was going to be parkland. Now, moved forward a year later, we're here before the commission to rezone again into a PLA. PLI?
PLIP.
And so, my confusion lies, this seems a circumspect way of going around the system so that the Lions Club can get what they're desiring. And that first, they failed, so they come back and they try another approach.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Strike, it didn't fail. We withdrew the application. The municipality withdrew the application.
You withdrew the application because it didn't meet minimum land, minimum area requirement?
Because we believe that that was the inappropriate approach to zone park property. It should be zoned appropriately as PLI, which it is. It's a dedicated park, and we were moving forward to bring it in to the PLI zoning district. Just because it's dedicated park by ordinance didn't necessarily mean it was zoned PLI. It was zoned R2M.
I understand how it was zoned. My concern is that it appears to be a land grab by the Lions Club.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Strike, there's no question about it. The Lions Club has specific interest in doing a long-term lease. As I indicated earlier, it's going to be on the ballot, be a ballot measure to determine whether the voters believe that.
Seeing no further questions, public testimony is closed. Questions staff, petitioners closed. The matter now rests with the body. What is the wish of the body? I have a motion from Mr. Spring. Would you like to make your motion, sir?
Yes, I'll make a positive motion to approve the rezoning, subject to the conditions of approval outlined by staff in the packet, with an additional condition, which would require, make this rezoning effective upon approval of a ballot measure authorizing the use of dedicated parkland to non-park use.
I have a second from Commissioner Ferguson, so I'll make sure I got it. So, your motion is to move with the special limitation as stated, and as modified by Mr. Weaver at the beginning of the, he modified that initial.
I believe it's.
He just added, "to address traffic circulation and public access." He added that to the special limitation at the beginning, if you recall.
Yes, thank you for the clarification.
And then, and you want to add that this will be contingent upon ballot approval for?
Approval, effective upon approval of the ballot measure authorizing the use of a dedicated parkland for non-park use.
Okay. So, I have a motion, and did I get a second? And it's already gone? So, Mr. Ferguson, have a second. Do you want to speak to your moments, motion, sir?
Well, it's possible not to support your own motion, isn't it? I believe it's a tradition that we do that sometimes. And I want to reiterate what the Commissioner Dean said about the appropriateness of this rezoning, with effect of the rezoning on the neighborhood. And in reality, what we're being asked to do is rezone this parcel for commercial use. It's indicated, although not specifically included in the packet, that this is going to be negotiated as an extension of the lease, 20-year lease for Lions Club, for their clubhouse activities, plus a substantial warehousing operation. It's my opinion that if we had this rezoning legitimately as a rezoning for a commercial use, we would never approve it. We would never approve a rezoning for a commercial use in the middle of a residential neighborhood. I can't imagine what kind of zoning commission would do that. Also, I don't think that, what I've seen of their plans, that this is, their plans would even be legal even with this rezoning. I think they haven't thought this through very well. If they're really intending to make this a warehouse, then they aren't going to be able to do it. They shouldn't be able to do it under the interpretation of the PLI zoning district regulations, because warehouses are not permitted in the warehousing. They're currently using 1,000 square feet for their club activities. Well, unless they're planning on expanding their membership, you know, doubling it, increasing the amount of space they would need for their activities, you could tell just by deduction that 4,000, perhaps, square feet of this new facility is going to be warehousing or very intensive commercial use.
Did the second, you want to say anything? Mr. Second?
I freely recognize that if this was coming to us as a new, a new use, a new facility, we would reject it out of hand. But this is a 20-year-old process that got started with none of us in the room, so we sort of kind of got to make the best arrangement we can going forward. And so, I understand the need to go forward. They're there. They're doing a good, a public good. We probably want to keep them in the community. And so, what I would try to do is, rather than throw the baby out with the bathwater, I would try to address the concern of the neighbors. I didn't hear the neighbors say, "Throw them out." I think each person that spoke, spoke clearly that, you know, they lived there, and the issues were with parking and issues like that. And one of the issues I heard was the container. Well, if they build a bigger building, then maybe they don't need to put a container in the front yard. And so, and then we get a chance to look at this thing as it comes back. I was going to put language in it to provide for a trail to take care of the access problem that we're going to still have. If they go away, we still have some of these same problems. And so, I think we should try to work. This is an imperfect plan. All nine of us, seven of us, eight of us, whatever we got tonight, I think would agree that this is an imperfect plan, and, but it's, the cards were dealt. None of us were here 20 years ago when this started. Hopefully, we're smart enough now. We sort of got, kind of got to make it work. And so, what I was going to propose is the limitation, the department recommendations as modified. I was going to change it to 2,500 feet, but I was going to add language to a trail on it. And the way I counted parking spots, there were 12 parking spots shown on the new drawing, and there was an existing gravel pad, which I think would give them the parking they need for the building. But I heard the neighbors say, "Was parking, traffic, and trail." And I'm trying to take care of those on it. But, so I would be supporting a slightly modified version of what you were discussing. Thank you.
Well, we can take amendments here. Let's go ahead and get Commissioner Strike, if you want to formulate an amendment. We can go on those. Go ahead, Commissioner Strike.
And, Mr. Ferguson, I can support and see where you're coming from and appreciate the limitation. The piece that I'm having difficulty with is that limitation, moving it from 1,000 square foot to 2,500 square foot. And I don't know that I could support that.
I would.
But I believe that we have to.
Again, it couldn't, just for clarity, it's currently 1,000 square foot is what the current, no one's changed that yet.
Correct.
Okay.
I guess I would, I would ask, I listened to what Mr. Spring said, and I, and I'm trying to imagine what it would be like if it was a commercial or private petitioner coming here. I'm a little bit disappointed that nobody from the Lions Club is here to talk about their thing. I know it's because they probably got advice to say this is a rezone, it's not the site plan review. However, the fact of the matter is, a park is a permitted use in the R2M, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now unless it wasn't to further this use, which is a 5,000 square foot facility in a residential use. Yes, the use has existed for 20 years, however, it's a non-conforming use. The purpose of nonconformities are that they go away over time, or they be corrected over time. There's ways that you can correct that deficiency through new design, you correct the characteristics of the use, but I still coming back, keep coming back to the actual use itself, and the appropriateness in the neighborhood, and the access through that neighborhood, I'm having a hard time seeing it. And so at this point, I, I don't believe that I will be supporting the motion.
Commissioner Ferguson, you made some thoughts earlier, did you want to make amendments? Move any amendments forward? Or you want to let go as is? Well, I'm gonna, I think we need to move it forward, I understand, I think the special limitations, the 1,000 feet, requires a site plan review and a public testimony. I think I heard what you heard, that, yeah, there are concerns about the three things, you know, the trail, the parking, the traffic, the access. They want to keep them in the box, I think the 1,000 feet keeps them in the box. They're not going to be able to change their use. I think you'll have even better enforcement, now that you not only have the ability to have community development enforcement, but you also have Parks and Rec. So I, I plan on supporting the motion. I don't see anyone else in the queue, so let's use the machines and let's vote. All right, the motion is to approve, as presented, with the special limitation as written, with the addition to the last sentence to address traffic circulation and public access. So the special limitation reads, prior to any structure over 1,000 square foot being developed on the property, a public hearing, site plan review, before the Planning and Zoning Commission shall be held to address traffic circulation and public access. And this is contingent upon ballot, approval of the ballot measure.
Yes.
Correct?
That's correct.
We're good? All right. We're okay with that, that's what we're voting on. And so this one fails. I had three yes, three no's, and an absence, so this one fails. So. Mind you, the appeal process, an individual may have appeal rights related to any action Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the assembly which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval of Planning and Zoning Commission or the resolution which is commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing, so that one's done. Why don't we take about a 10-minute break, and then we'll go on to our last case. Okay? 10 minutes? Up to case S11-970-2, petitioner including plat for review by the Planning and Zoning Commission, Commission, to divide some tract. Do I have a staff report? We ready, everybody here? We ready? Everybody, we're here, we have a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This preliminary plat is a request for subdivision of one tract of land into 36 lots and three tracts of land. A plat in subdivision variance from AMC 2180-300D design standards for lot dimensions, the width of a lot shall be at least one-third of the depth of a lot, was originally approved by, approved of this property by the Planning and Zoning Commission on March 4th, 2013, as a cluster housing development governed by AMC 2150-210. That plat included a 60-month approval with development occurring in three different phases. This plat application amends that previous approval by reducing the number of lots from 71 to 36, modifying the lot widths from 35 to 70, and reducing the length of acre circle from 600 feet to 480 feet. The petition site is zoned PC Plan Community District. The site is governed by the Iclutna Powder Reserve Track 48 Master Plan, approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, March 13th of 2007, as AO 2007-6. The master plan shows the petition site is being zoned PR-MF3, or Powder Reserve High Density Residential District. The Tugayak Eagle River Comprehensive Plan update shows that this area is being residential with a density of 16 to 30 dwelling units per acre. The Iclutna Powder Reserve Track 48 Master Plan shows this site is being suitable for a residential density of up to 17 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density with this subdivision is 2.3 dwelling units per acre. Access to the site is via Iclutna Park Drive. Streets within the subdivision will be publicly dedicated, 60-foot wide, built to a 33-foot back-of-curb-to-back-of-curb municipal standard roadway, with five-foot sidewalks on both sides of the street. COSA Way extends the northwest boundary of the subdivision, providing a future connection to the neighboring property. A temporary turnaround will be provided along that roadway until such time as the roadway is extended. To the southeast, acre circle extends 480 feet to a cul-de-sac, which will provide a trail connection to the Iclutna Water and Utility Easement. The area-wide trails plan shows a proposed multi-use, paved multi-use trail along the north side of Iclutna Park Drive, as well as trail links from this area to propose paved and unpaved trails along both sides of Fire Creek. Staff is recommending the dedication of a pedestrian access from COSA Way to Fire Creek, and a walkway be constructed south of acre circle to connect to the Iclutna Water and Utility Easement. With that being said, staff would like to recommend approval of this plat for 18 months, subject to conditions listed on pages 10, 11, and 12 of your staff packet. Thank you.
We have some questions for you, Commissioner Dean.
Through the chair, regarding the pathway on acres, from the end of acres to the electrical easement that you have listed on, I think it was requirement number two or three, and number three, yeah. You're requesting a paved situation, which would mean replating that area, because it would mean the lots would be too narrow at that point in order to allow for 35-foot width. When it gets to the easement, are you requiring that the easement have some kind of a paved or gravel surface, something for people to walk on, or is it just end at the end of the lots?
Through the.
I'm curious what you guys are thinking.
Through the chair, Ms. Dean, my, my understanding is that they're going to pave on property up to the utility easement, basically putting the public on notice that there is a, a trail connection there. The utility easement will not be constructed, it will not be paved, it will probably be left as is. The lot widths along that dedicated path will be more than 35 feet in width, they may not be, they may be right at 35 feet in width at the, at the property line of the cul-de-sac, but in terms of overall lot width, they will far exceed 35 feet.
So, okay, I, you know, that part to me isn't relevant, I'm just trying to figure out what's going to happen to the trail, it's just going to end. And is the trails coordinator involved in this plat at all to try and help with that? I mean, what's been their opinion? And I didn't see anything from them in the packet, maybe I missed it.
Yeah, through the chair, Ms. Dean, the non-motorized transportation coordinator has been very involved in this, in this case. This is simply, the case that's before you tonight is simply an amendment to a previously approved plat. The conditions that were placed on the original plat by that non-motorized transportation coordinator essentially were carried over. I think a lot of the, the issues associated with trails have been worked out between staff, non-motorized transportation coordinator, and the petitioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Recommendation 16 requires subdividing Lot 8 to create a track where the emergency turnaround will be located separate of any home. This track shall be under the ownership and maintenance of the Established Homeowners Association. I understand that. Then, on comment 20, is providing a plat note regarding the automatic vacation of the temporary turnaround extension on COSA Way. Those two appear to be in conflict with each other.
Through the chair, Mr. Ferguson, to explain, what staff is recommending here is separating Lot 8 to provide that, that temporary turnaround for when the, the road is, is actually extended. What we are also doing, and what is standard on, on plats with temporary turnarounds, is that the, the turnaround would be automatically vacated upon, upon extension of that roadway. So we don't feel that they are in conflict or contrary to each other.
Why does this track should be under the ownership and maintenance of the Established Homeowners Association? You're saying that so that someone's responsible for plowing snow, why it's in use, is that what your intent is there?
Through the chair, Mr. Ferguson, what we're trying to do is, is ensure that that tract is not sold to a private person for, for construction of a home, and that it is retained as a turnaround. There are a couple other open space tracts located on this property that are going to be incorporated into the homeowners association and be owned and maintained by the association. I believe the petitioner is amenable to, to that condition, so that is the intent.
Why do you have note 20 then? Why do you turn around and say you got to vacate it?
Well, it, it's, there's a note that, that is pretty typical of all plating actions that simply states that the temporary turnaround will be automatically vacated upon extension of the roadway. All I'm asking is that the petitioner provide a note on the plat stating just that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Spring?
Yes, thank you. There's, the non-motorized transportation coordinator recommended another easement from the roadways, it says, it's kind of vague a little bit, and I was wondering if you could tell me where you think that easement would be located, between which lots would that be?
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, possibly between lots 19 and 20. The lot numbering has, with this plating action, has changed a bit from the last plating action, but I think that the non-motorized transportation coordinator had suggested at that time that that be the approximate location of the trail to serve Fire Creek.
So, if I can continue then, it looks like that's already tracked it out, however, in the plat that we have before us. Is that correct? So there would be no other easement?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not following you.
Well, between lot 19 and 20, there's already a tract there that looks like, doesn't indicate it's an easement, but it looks like it could be used as an easement.
Well, then we could, we could dedicate an easement on that tract, and we could provide a plat note. The, the exact location is to be resolved with non-motorized transportation coordinator. It was simply suggestive, and it was, like you had said, it's somewhat vague. I didn't want to spell it out exactly, if that's not what the non-motorized transportation coordinator, so I'm leaving it up to her and the petitioner to, to agree as to where that appropriate easement should be.
Okay, I was just wondering what I was approving. Well, one other question, if I could, there's a requirement under the TIA that there be improvements at the interchange at North Eagle River Access Road and the Glen Highway. And if I remember right, maybe the petitioner's representative can tell me, I believe there was some requirement for traffic signals there, but I don't see any information about how close we are to the need for that type of improvement, you know, what is the level of service at the intersection? Supposedly it has to be done before 50% of the tracts within Powder Reserve Track A is, are completed, so this is obviously before 50%. I just don't know how close we are, and I don't see any information regarding.
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, you are absolutely correct, that has been, it's been a topic of discussion for, oh, a few years since I've been working on this particular property. What the status of those improvements are at this point in time, I, I would probably turn it over to the petitioner and, and have them, you know, discuss what, what they've worked out with, with DOT in regards to those improvements.
Any other questions for staff? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Ms. Robinson, I'm sorry, I dropped you out of the queue, sorry.
Thank you. Through the chair, could you remind me why we have this plat in, in front of us? Is it because it was, it's a PC zone property and we see all of them, or is it because it was originally approved and by the, the cluster?
Through, through the chair, Mr. Robinson, it is a condition of the master plan that requires all actions to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so that's, that's why it's before you tonight.
So does the master plan, maybe this is, I guess from your perspective, does the master plan get amended at a later time to reflect, you know, basically that, I assume that the master plan allows it just an up to certain amount of density, so as long as there, it's not, it's not creating a minimum floor, is that right?
Through, through the chair, Mr. Robinson, you are absolutely correct. The master plan allows for up to 17 dwelling units per acre, they're providing less than that, and so there is no need to amend the master plan, as I see it.
I see it, so if, in the future, if they want to do that, does it sort of tidy up they can, but?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? So I guess it's petitioner, petitioner's rep. Come on up, state your name, spell it, please.
Oops, excuse me. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, planning staff, and concerned members of the public. My name is Tom Drayer, I am with the S4 group, and I am representing Iclutna, Inc. tonight. And with me tonight, for your benefit, from Iclutna is Mr. Jim Arneson, Greg McDonald, and Laverne Springer. And from the engineering side with Triad Engineering, we have Mr. Dave Grenier and Brandon Markcott. I'd like to reserve five minutes for rebuttal, if I could, please. This application is amendment to our previously approved 71-lot subdivision for the same location. The original application, case S-11970, was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on March 4th, 2013. This application amends the original by the following. One, reducing the number of lots from 71 to 36. The previous lots were in general 35 feet wide, and the amended lots you see before you now are about 70 feet wide, minimum. Two, shortening the southerly cul-de-sac from 600 feet to 480 feet in length, and reconfiguration of the tracks. Powder View is a 15-acre site within the PC zoning as regulated per AO 2007-06. AO 2007-06 is the assembly ordinance that approved the Iclutna Powder Reserve Track 48 Master Plan, which encompasses the entire 404-acre site that you see on the second page of this submitted preliminary plat. Powder View is zoned PR-MF3, which is classified as a high-density residential district per the approved master plan. PR-MF3 zoning is similar to Title 21 R4 zoning in character. Powder View is being submitted for approval as a 36-lot, single-family home subdivision, which is an allowed type of development as per the master plan. The allowed density in PR-MF3 is basically from 0 to 17 DUAs, and Powder View is proposed has a density level of about 2.3 DUAs. Powder View complies with the Tugayak Eagle River Comprehensive Plan, the master plan, and Title 21 regulations. Our team has made presentations to the Eagle River Community Council, and the Birtwood Community Council. At each presentation, we also held question-answer sessions for the community, and in the process successfully answered all the questions and received their approval. Powder View, as you agree, has some added amenities in our design you normally do not see in subdivisions today. We have responsibly designed, including our design amongst other items, fairly large lots from 8,400 square feet. lots from 8,400 square feet up to 30,000 square feet, with many of the lots over 14,000 square feet. We're providing deep lots, provide plenty of backyard space for large decks, hot tubs, and greenhouses, et cetera. Provide a beautiful landscape entry median with greenbelt landscaping areas on both sides of the entry area, and sidewalks on both sides of the street. Coving of the front yard setbacks will be provided. Coving is a unique design technique that utilizes variable setbacks for the front of the houses in relation to the streetscape, creating a more visually interesting and pleasing environment. A front setback easement is placed on the plat, ensuring that each home builder will comply with the coving intent. Many of the lots on the north side of the street have great opportunities for walkout basements, which many homebuyers in Alaska prefer, and a scenic view across the valley to Fire Creek to the north. Powder View is well-designed with all streets-to-MOA standards within public right-of-ways and with public water, sewer, storm drainage, gas, electric, and cable services. Our design and development team has been working together with all of the MOA and other applicable reviewing agencies through both the pre-application conference process and the post-application conference process, with a successful result of their full approval of the Powder View design as submitted. We concur with all the planning department recommendations that are in your packet on pages 10 through 12, and seek your approval for Powder View subdivision. Thank you.
Excellent. You have about five and a half minutes left. What are our questions? Any questions for the petitioner? I see no questions for the petitioner, sir. Thank you very much. Is there anyone who wishes to testify? Anyone at all? Anyone want to make comments? Any comments? Any testimony? Seeing and hearing none, sir, you have five minutes for your rebuttal.
I think I'd pretty much summed it all up, so I'll just-
Five twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Five twenty-six? Five twenty-five?
I'll just make myself available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, Stacy, someone, oh, now the queues come up for the rebuttal time. Go ahead, Stacy.
Through the chair, my question is, you talk about having a trail at the south end of, or the east end of Acres Circle. It's going to be paved, right?
Yes, yeah, because it's going to be paved, because that's where an access easement has to go out also for the AWW lift station.
So, then it ends, but it just ends.
But it'll be paved on an easement.
But it just ends. It doesn't do anything.
Well, it actually ends there. It accesses the existing trail that goes all the way up north and south on that right-of-way.
Is it a, just gravel?
Yeah, it's just a well-worn trail. It's been being used for decades or so.
Okay.
And, yeah, it's a pretty good trail.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Commissioner Spring.
Yes, I don't have any problem with approving this subdivision. I think it's a big improvement over the last one, although my other commissioners didn't agree with me on that one, I think. But I think with the larger lots, it'll fit in better with the community, the existing subdivisions in the area, and relieve some of my concerns, and I see, also relieve some of the concerns of the Suburso Board regarding fire access and maintenance and snow removal and snow storage and things like that. But just to follow up on my previous question, do you know what the status of the interchange is and how that's functioning now? I know there's a recommendation for a condition of approval to resolve it with the DOT, so I'm not concerned with it, I'm just curious, I guess.
Yeah, those improvements will be looked at at 50%, and I think 50% of build-out of the entire northern area, which is about 404 acres. And so, we're, with the approval of Powder View, we're at about 2%. So, we have another 48% to go until we start looking at improvements beyond what's existing today. And that's in the AO and also in the TIA.
Well, I guess I interpreted that a little bit differently. It sounded like it had to be done before 50%. It didn't say you can't do it before 50%. It says it has to be done, it didn't say you have to do it at 50%, it said you have to do it before, but. So, do you foresee going to the DOT and checking that box? Will they look at the, how the interchange is functioning and to make sure that there's not a problem now with-
Yeah, we went through the whole process back in March through the other approval, and they have signed off on it and are fine with the level of service as it exists today.
Is it, am I right? And is it going to be a signal, or is it going to be some ramp reconstruction?
Dave, do you want to answer?
Mr. Commission members, my name is Jim Arnesson. Speaking to that issue, we believe that it's when we reach a 50% build-out, we're going to have to participate in that, and sometime in the future here, when we get a little closer down the road, we still have to wait for water and sewer to come to some of the rest of that area, because it can't be served yet. So, we don't know how long it's going to be. We don't know what the state might have in mind, but that intersection has been growing along with the rest of Eagle River for a long, long time, so.
So, then, the actual mitigation measures aren't specified in the TIA?
No, we just have to reach an agreement with, before we can, once we get to that 50-point, 50% level, we're going to have to deal with the issue with DOT. I suspect DOT will have to deal with that issue well before we ever get to 50%. The rest of Eagle River-
With your participation, I'm assuming. With Iclutna's participation, I'm assuming.
Yes, part of the future, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Robinson.
Two questions through the chair. Do you know if the 2006 comp plan update that called this 16 to 30 DUA, if that preceded the original PC, or if that sort of followed the PC?
Well, with, within Powder Reserve, the 420 acres were, we have to comply with the AO, the existing PC zoning. So, that trumps the, any comp plan-type density?
No, I recognize that. I guess I'm just saying, you made the comment that you're consistent with the comp plan. Technically, I would say that you're not. I mean, you're not here asking for a rezone. I don't, I agree with you. I don't believe that we have the ability to turn down a plat because of it, because of a minimum lot zone, but I don't think that you're consistent, and I was just curious as to whether the comp plan was just following the original PC master plan designation, or at one point you thought maybe that was something that the comp plan suggested, and this would be the location within the reserve to locate some, you know, the, more of the higher-density housing.
Yeah, I guess we comply with the comp plan because a PC ends up being a part of the entire code, Title 21, and the comp plans, and all the other plans that are, that compose all of the land development regulations in that respect.
I guess my other question really has to do with the layout of the lots, and, you know, I clearly look at the topography and, you know, look at, look at some of those lots and, you know, I look at Lot 22 and 21, and I think the, you know, granted that they're still narrow, but I see no real adjustment of the lots to accommodate any kind of topography, and I don't know that, not having done that many plats as a plating authority, I don't really know what our authority is, but I'm just curious as to why you wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't have the lots maybe work a little bit more. They feel like they're fighting the topography at times, to me.
Well, the, we have the lots designed on the bluff side, if you will, so that you have a road and plenty enough of an area for the house before the bluff takes off, but there are some areas that are going to be steeper, like you were mentioning Lot 21 and 22. But I think part of the issue here is that you're looking at lots that are probably three times larger than you would normally see, so they're including a lot more area. So, in essence, you pretend to take that, the far lot line, and now bring it 50% towards the road. Now you have your normal-sized lot. I mean, it's still even larger, comparatively speaking. So, what we're providing here is extra depth because, well, for one, we have the land there, and so when you buy, say, like Lot 22 or so, you're going to have a walkout basement designed in your house, most likely, and also, say, on Lot 23. And a lot of people really prefer those type of house designs. They're the ones that sell first. And when terrain is changing like this, it's not always going to be perfect.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any further questions in the queue, so thank you very much, and we will close the public hearing, so the matter now rests with the body. What is the weight of the body? Mr. Ferguson, you have a motion?
Matter of Page 71, S-119702, Powder View subdivision, Lots 1 to 36, I believe that they approved, affirmations, including the staff comments on Days 10, 11, 12.
I have a motion for Mr. Ferguson to approve as presented, and I have a second. Commissioner Spring, Commissioner Ferguson, any comments on your motion?
Comments are that this is an improvement over 1 and 4. I believe that's correct. I believe it meets the requirements.
Commissioner Spring, any comments as the secondor?
No.
No.
I agree. I support the comments that it is an improvement, and it does reduce some of the concerns regarding fire access and snow removal space. Thank you.
Just add that, being the rep that has to drive past that on the way home, the guy with the furthest drive home tonight, that it, yeah, this is a fantastic improvement. I'm really, really pleased to see this. So, I don't think we need to vote, and I see no objections. This one passes unanimously. No objections, no objection seen, passes unanimously. Congratulations. You want to know about your appeal rights? No. Okay, so, thank you very much. I think that covers the agenda items. However, don't pack up yet. Thanks, folks. We did get an email earlier this week about a citizen complaining about signs. I don't know if you have that email handy. It's not printed out. Do you recall? I know Mr. Ferguson wanted to talk about it. I know Mr. Robinson had a question, but I never got a, saw a response to your question, Mr. Robinson, and you asked if there was a city response or immunity. This is the issue about the signs the car dealership is in?
Yeah, I would just ask that staff work with the Planning and Zoning Commission to make sure this gets answered in one form or another. It would appear to me that this is more an assembly question than Planning and Zoning Commission. We don't draft the regulations. It's questioning that. I would ask also that if she has a specific instances where there have been complaints that have not been addressed, we'd like to hear about that.
Through the chair, Mr. Ferguson, if you're referring to the issue that I think you're referring to, I had a conversation with this woman at length, I would say in excess of an hour, earlier this week, actually, I'm sorry, on Friday, and I forwarded her comments or her photographs onto Code Enforcement. Code Enforcement has been working with her for a few years. They are well aware of her complaints, and they do follow up on all of her complaints, investigate them, and enforce as necessary.
Okay, but I just want to cover that we did, we did receive her email, and we did discuss her email and make sure that that's on the record.
If you could just make sure that Erica sends me a note on the current status and update. Yes, we did get it, we looked at it. I agree with Mr. Ferguson. I don't think this is, this is our line. This is more assembly.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I give, I, her comments on the end about Title 21 offended me, but at the same time, the question on banners, I think banners are a new issue, and that possibly the Assembly may want to take up the question on banners.
Well, I, I think, I think she has kind of, she's got an issue with the way that the code is written and what the code permits, and she also has complaints that are forwarded on the Code Enforcement. So, I think that there are two issues there. One, is she looking to amend code to prohibit these type of things? And two, is she, is she looking to get Code Enforcement involved so that they can enforce as appropriate? And I will notify Erica. Like I said, we are, I have forwarded on the Code Enforcement, and we will follow up.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Spring moves that we adjourn. Mr. Spring, have a second to his motion.
Second?
He's already backed up and left, so I think I took that as a motion. All right, thank you very much. We're adjourned. Oh, I can do that. Thanks very much.
You guys are going to be here Monday, right?
We're back again next Monday, yes.